Lauren.
Yes, I will. And Amy is actually joining us right this second.
Okay. Got it. Great. Okay, so I'm going to call to order the master plan implementation committee of October 18th, 2021 at 6:33 PM. Quick roll call. President Katie Dugan.
President Tim Davis.
Yep.
President Cassie Malatesta.
President Marissa Manley.
Hi, Marissa. Okay. And Amy is somewhere.
She's she's stuck in joining mode, so.
Okay. We'll try and get her promoted.
So we I set this up actually as just a meeting, not a webinar. So the second she joins, she'll be here.
Okay.
She's just, I think it's just a little delayed, but Amy will be joining us. And then, again, I'm Lauren Lynn, I'm the planning director, and we have a couple of new attendees. So nice to see you all and to meet Marissa.
Yes. So first up, I did want to introduce Marissa. Marissa is our member, full member from Open Space and Rec Committee. She is the liaison from that committee. Tom is listening in as a participant, not as a member tonight. And we also have Tom Baker, who I know is listening in as a community member who's interested in one of the sidewalk topics. And we have Corey Evans from the Select Board, who's going to help me update the committee in a minute on where we are within the very beginning stages around the village revitalization and the wrap up of the Economic Task Force that we had in our year one priorities. So with that, Marissa, I just thought I'd have you introduce yourself to the group since you're going to be working with us and hopefully stay a while on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So I'll hand it over to you just to give you a quick introduction of who you are and how you've been involved in the town.
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. So I have been on the Open Spaces Committee for a little over a year. I initially got involved. We recently moved here about two years ago and love the town and really wanted to, you know, roll up my sleeves and be helpful where I could. You know, you always see a lot of people complaining, but not a lot of people raising their hands. So I wanted to kind of throw my hat in the ring. And I very much love the environment and sustainability and all of the sort of natural resources that Cohasset has to offer, which is how I landed on the Open Spaces Committee. And the past spring, we, myself and one other member of that committee, did a lot of the Earth Day. The Earth Day Bingo was something new that we had introduced and trying to get a little more of the town involved and things like that while trying to kind of maintain COVID restrictions. And so looking to do more things like that as well, just to try to get more people involved and aware of your sustainability and the natural resources of Cohasset.
That's great. Well, thank you for thank you for volunteering to be a liaison. I met with Marissa a couple of weeks, just to kind of onboard her, give her some background information and promised that we wouldn't, we wouldn't go too hard and let her kind of wade in as she felt comfortable. Julia, welcome. Know that Julia, Julia, who's joining is our historical commission liaison. She recently had shoulder surgery, so hopefully she'll be able to participate. So just a quick housekeeping thing, I'd like to approve the minutes from July 19th, 2021. I had hoped to get the set from September typed up, but that was just a pipe dream. So I'll have that ready for our November meeting, but I forgot to call a vote last time and I would, I'd like to stay relatively current on minutes. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 19th, 2021. Marissa, you should abstain, obviously, because you don't participate in that meeting. So no obligation there. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? I, Katie Dugan.
I, Tim Davis.
Got some more eyes. A lot of people on mute.
I, Julia Gleason.
Thank you.
Hi, Julia Gleason.
Thanks, Julia. All right. Amy, can I get an eye from you?
How about sign language, Amy?
Yeah, no, is that, is that a yes?
Yes, I just had too many things up.
Okay, you're like which Zoom call am I on? Okay, I think that's a quorum. So thank you for that. Just to kind of overview the agenda. We've got Corey up first so that he can give us a quick wrap up and kind of foreshadow where we're headed with village revitalization. At seven o'clock, hopefully Don Pyatt will be joining us to talk a little bit about sidewalk funding. He, Lauren and I met a couple of weeks back and we have kind of a sketch of a plan that we wanted to discuss with the group and get feedback on. There's nothing written on paper, but this is a, again, a working sketch of what we'd like to do relative to funding. And then I hope to deep dive into kind of the main agenda item tonight, which is sidewalk priorities, the Complete Streets Program. And I have done some work with Jason Federico and Brian, Brian Joyce and Lauren from the town side that I can share with the group, not not complete, but definitely in process and gives us a sense of what that what that set of priorities might look like and what we need, might need to be able to commit to from a funding perspective. And then last but not least, I wanted to cover the Sawyer Street sidewalks. And I did circulate today a letter of support that if people are comfortable, I'd like to send in from the Master Plan Implementation Committee to the Conservation Committee this week, just articulating why we think the sidewalk segment is important to the community. And I've also asked Open Space and Rec to sign on to that. So it'd be two committees that would be sending that in. So that's kind of the agenda. Corey, before I hand it over to you, there were just three more housekeeping things. One is the Elm Street Corridor Working Group is is trying to wrap up its first part of its work. And the final public forum for that, which includes the the final and recommended designs for both the corridor itself and that intersection that's being redesigned with the new CHI, is going to happen on Thursday, the 28th. Lauren, that's a seven o'clock start?
Sorry, trying to find that on mute. Yes, it's it's going to be from seven to eight thirty PM via Zoom. We've been hoping to have in person, but unfortunately, we're just not at that at that state where we're able to do that right now.
Um, I did try and circulate because there's actually three. I mean, there's the, obviously, the little flyer. But there is some great stuff that came out as a result of the working group. And, you know, one was there was a detailed map that really blew up the intersection in terms of how that would be reconfigured, including the Fisherman's Well, Julia, and I know that Lauren sent this to you separately. And as part of that, there's also a full report that our consultants from Weston and Sampson produced that I haven't had a chance to read. I tried circulating it to the working group, but I got a bunch of bounce backs. So I'm just pulling. Cassie, did you see that come through in your email or not?
I believe I, I believe I did. Yep.
Also, I'll just note that it's on the Master Plan Implementation Committee website that actually the flyer links to. Because I was having that issue as well. It's a little big of a file size. So depending on people's email server, they may or may not get it. So it's on the website, though, so people can access it there.
Yeah, it came through just fine on my end. It looks good.
Sometimes I get bounce backs and I'm like, really? I'm like, you know, people's Gmail bounced it back and I, and I was like, other people's Gmail didn't. So I'm a little suspicious. So that that report, I mean, it looks awesome. I mean, just in terms of like professional, but I think it's really important for those of us that are interested, before we go into that final public forum, to kind of at least familiarize ourselves with the the final plan. There is an executive summary, but then there is some great stuff in terms of summarizing the existing conditions, what the conceptual layout is, what the community feedback was in terms of data gathering, you know, really great detail. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that and mark your calendars for the 28th. So that's my only other kind of housekeeping thing unless we come up against something else that people want to know about. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Corey, to sort of give us a quick update. And Lauren, if you make me host, I can share what you already have. I can share the PowerPoint that Corey quickly whipped up for us to look at. So hopefully, everybody can see that on the screen now.
And thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and Jen Boylan's joining us now, just so everyone knows.
Okay. Hey, Jen. Um, so Corey, I'm going to hand it over to you to, and I'll happy to to advance slides as you want.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for listening to me. I will tweak. Katie mentioned that I'll foreshadow things. It sounds a little bit ominous. So I'll use preview rather than foreshadow.
It's Halloween.
It's October. Right, exactly. What exactly is going to happen in the village? All right. So just for a quick recap. Last year, you know, we were kind of in the depth of the COVID-19 pandemic. And one of the working groups that was launched at the master plan was the Economic Task Force. We just had a list of things to basically just get, get us into the community, talk to as many people as possible and just kind of assess, get some sense of, you know, how this is impacting Cohasset and try to make some immediate changes, immediate recommendations. But then also have this longer term view where, you know, where do we go from here? We know that especially there's a lot of been, a lot of economic development, you know, efforts have launched and kind of petered out. So we wanted to learn from those efforts and try to not, you know, kind of run into the same potholes. So anyway, just, just a quick recap. We, as I said, we had some semi weekly meetings. We invited a wide range of people from local business owners and landowners. We worked with the Cross Chamber of Commerce, Larry Crothell, who works at Hingham Savings in Town, to help them launch the Cohasset Gift Card, which is a gift card program where people can, you know, gift, buy a gift card that only works in participating Cohasset businesses. We also applied for, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce in Cohasset and in Hull, as well as the Senior Center in Cohasset and Hull to apply for. And we won a regional pilot grant program, which is, which is designed to connect local restaurants with seniors through the senior centers. More about that in a second. And we also were involved in launching the Cohasset Get Outside Program, which was just a simple program to try to streamline the event process so that if a business wanted to use the town common to have some sort of socially distanced class or whatever, they would more easily be able to do that. So that's kind of what we crammed into one year of work. And that was pretty fun. So next slide, please.
Yes.
There was a thing on the top, but I guess it didn't come through. The, so the regional pilot grant, the program is basically, there we go. Okay. Got titled seaside suppers for seniors, alliterative there, also a little tongue twister. But the idea was to create a very, you know, low maintenance, slow overhead home meal delivery service. The Senior Center already does this in a, in a, in a way where they provide no cost meals to certain families in town. So we sort of already had the infrastructure there. We also had restaurants that were struggling with staffing and were struggling with high fees on local delivery services. I mean, if you order from any of the, you know, major home delivery services, there's a huge expense to that. And that really turned off a lot of residents where a lot of businesses where they used to do it, or they were thinking of stopping just because they couldn't afford it. So this program is about to be launched. But largely, this is the kind of the bullet points to understand is it's a unified portal, which includes a lot of restaurants in Cohasset and in Hull. It features them boldly with, you know, a very good layout. It allows basically people in the area to go to one place to figure out where, if they wanted to order from local restaurants, who has what? And to easily get them to place orders. We also linked to the Senior Center to include this information in the the different newsletters that go out, but also the Senior Center can, is going to be wired in so that they can place orders for residents that aren't very tech savvy. As I said, it utilizes resisting existing resources at the Senior Center. When it comes to delivery, we've got volunteers or Senior Center employees that can assist with getting, moving meals around. And it generates revenue. Again, it's, it's the idea being that it's not, it doesn't require restaurants to hire a lot of people. It doesn't require a lot of overhead. It doesn't cost them really much money at all to participate. So it's a very hyper local thing. And we got a lot of, at the state level, there's a lot of excitement for us to try to kind of take this, this viewpoint and really put it under one kind of municipal umbrella, leveraging a lot of different in-town resources. So that was kind of, I would say, the, one of the main, you know, six, I want to say successes, but main projects that we worked on and are excited to see actually execute in in real life. So next slide, please.
Okay. There we go.
All right. So, you know, the second half of what we were tasked to do was kind of figure out what the next steps were. And Cohasset, as most of you know, is is a little bit, this kind of two worlds of Cohasset. There's the downtown village district and then there's 3A. And that's a pretty big gap because the village is really designed for residents in town. There's a lot of services, a lot of conveniences. And 3A is more, you know, the customers from 3A tend to be more out of towners, people that are passing through. Or, you know, commuters, those sorts of things. So we really found very two different groups of, of, of businesses and very disparate things that they, that they really you know, were looking for or how they identified with customers, so those sort of things. But as you might expect, there was a lot of passion around the village, around improving the village, around protecting the village, around making sure that the village is a safe and and really vibrant place. So that's where we shifted our focus to say, okay, we really, village is something that everyone universally agrees upon is really a priceless part of Cohasset and needs a lot of attention. And there's also been a lot of development happening in town. It's a little bit out of order, but you see a lot, you know, there are projects that are either have just under, have just happened, the Smith Place Building. You've got projects on Pond Street that are, you know, permitted and ready to go. And there's a lot of other things that are that are seeming in the pipeline. So since we're in this kind of first phase of development and revitalization of downtown, it's a good time for us to look at what our downtown zoning is and whether that's still, you know, compliant with what we see the village going forward. So things that we need to be sure we we protect is things like adequate parking. You know, we have a parking bylaw which may create some challenges. And one of the biggest complaints we have, we heard from residents is lack of parking. The town did do a parking study a few years back that really wasn't too informative about what we should do. But that's something that everyone is worried about. If we, if the village does develop more, what would that mean for being able to even park in the village, get into and out of the village? We also have a housing production plan and, you know, 40B requirements, we do have affordable housing steering committees got a lot of 40B work in the pipeline, but downtown village is really a great place to have a good mixed, mixed housing stock. There's also questions about how do we encourage the village to have a kind of unified character, represent our town and keep maintenance up? You know, that way we don't have buildings that are, you know, somewhat dilapidated or a little bit behind what would be ideal maintenance. We also heard from businesses that were talking about that they'd love to stay in the village, but they need more space or the space that they have doesn't quite fit their needs. And it's really a struggle. That was an interesting thing to hear because that's a solvable problem. So we can ensure that whatever gets built is usable space. That's going to attract the type of business that that exists there or is going to attract businesses to come in and stay, those sorts of things. Be sure that we have usable commercial space. And then, of course, you know, this group doesn't, can't exist on its own in silo. It has to really be hand in hand and supplement the zoning bylaw working group. Because, you know, downtown has its own zoning district and any changes need to be kind of done hand in hand to understand the broader picture. So. Next slide, please.
Yeah. And I think the only context, just for those that aren't fully aware of kind of what when Corey was referencing the multiple properties in in development. Lauren had done up just a short list and there's it, assume this is still current because it's only a couple of weeks old, but there are three properties that are in permitting. One is 124 and 87 Elm Street, which is a CHI project, which is harbor slash very close to village. One Pleasant Street, which is a mixed use redevelopment of that existing that would have 14 residential apartments above it. So sort of addressing what Corey is referencing in terms of there is going to be impacts in terms of new, new units that we need to take into account as it relates to 40B and the housing production plan. And then 147 South Main Street, which is a little farther down, but is also being permitted or in permitting for mixed use in three residential apartments. And then beyond that, there are three anticipated ones, one at 55 Main, South Main Street, another at 2 Smith and another at 40R South Main Street. So those the 55 South Main Street is mixed use with sort of a TBD in terms of the number of residential units or rental or condo units. And the other ones are really still in kind of the beginning stages. So just so that people have a context of what that development means is that there are sort of six that are in play. And I don't know if there's going to be much more than that, but then, you know, for a village of Cohasset size, that's quite a bit of activity. Let's put it that way.
Well, yeah. And I think, you know, what we're seeing a kind of across town, the trend is that, you know, as I noted here, you know, land values are increasing really drastically and pieces of property that maybe wouldn't have been financially attractive to develop are starting to, you know, become easily developable. And that's obviously that goes to, you know, new, new, you know, undeveloped land, but also existing properties that could be redeveloped. And that's really, I think, where we're going to be seeing downtown. We have a lot of buildings that, you know, could be redeveloped and, you know, have a much larger usable footprint. So if that's going to happen, and it seems like it is, let's be sure that we we understand how that's going to look for us. So.
I'm curious, Corey, if I can just ask you, when you say these buildings that look like they need redevelopment or whatever, I know there's some vacant buildings in the village. How, how do we as a community address that when these are all private properties?
So, yeah, there's a lot of different ways. Different towns have had, have had different strategies to, to, to kind of address these things and with different levels of success. And it's kind of each town is so unique that there's kind of no one playbook and we want to kind of delve into that more. And that's kind of what the next effort is going to be. But you do, I mean, the simple things are appearance bylaws or, or, you know, empty space bylaws. You know, some suggestions were that came across was where if there's an open space, can we do something with that? Can we turn that into, you know, a place where we can have the, the South Shore Art Center, you know, have a display, some, some sort of thing where empty spaces can give back. And that's just one of a million different ways. But also just, you know, if we have other ideas include having, you know, a, a special district where there's, where there's a dedicated funding pool to ensure sidewalks are taken care of or trees are trimmed. And then you hope that through kind of, you know, the group, the appearance of all the buildings improving, it kind of brings, brings along everybody else. So there's, there's different ways to do it. And there's no kind of surefire way because as you said, they're all private, but you know, there's ways we can encourage it to go in the right direction.
Okay. Well, thank, I'm just curious because obviously I'm concerned about it as well. I mean, we now have the downtown village that has a combination of several banks, many real estate agencies and some vacant buildings and some buildings that are, you know, in need of repair and upgrading. But I'm not sure what the mechanism is other than eminent domain that you can force the, the plan on private owners. I think, you know, what's going on with the, with the gas station is wonderful and I applaud that. I think that's going to, hopefully, if that's successful, that'll be a wonderful addition to the downtown. But what about the other ones where we have owners of private property that have no interest in participating in this effort?
Well, part of it also comes down to economics, Tim. I mean, which is basically to say, you know, if we, right now, if we have a downtown that is attractive to people, then there's going to be more, you know, pressure to develop because the properties can support, you know, a different level of commerce. So you're hoping that, you know, one thing that we learned, which is really amazing, is that there's already kind of this chain of, of businesses that are, that are happening right now when it comes to young children and families, especially with the Nursery School and the Cohasset Learning Center, that's developed this kind of a bunch of businesses that are kind of in the same like trip where, you know, a family can, can pick up their children, get a coffee, get some lunch, do a little bit of shopping. And as that kind of increases, that momentum increases, then you'll see that these buildings, which have an untapped potential, I think, will, will start realizing their potential more and more. And the only thing we can do really is encourage that. There's no way that we can grab stuff. But if we encourage it, I think it'll be going in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to go to the next slide.
So this is kind of the, the next, the next phase of what we're working on is kind of to launch a village revitalization and sustainability working group. I say sustainability and I put it in here because, you know, I think that redevelopment or all those things, I think, conjure up a little bit of a different, different intention. And we just want to be sure that the, that downtown Cohasset remains or improves and remains sustainable. You know, obviously, overdevelopment is a problem, both with, you know, we don't have a huge population base here. But also, you know, we will have traffic, we have traffic concerns, all these kinds of things. So we need to be sure that this is done properly and sustainably. So this working group, basically, right now, as being imagined is two select board representatives, a planning board representative and MPIC member, obviously. We do think that having someone from Foreword Housing Steering Committee would be great. That way we can be on the ground floor of making sure that whatever, we're not missing opportunities to add to our 40B stock when it's appropriate. The town planner, obviously. And then we'd have a representative from the Cross Chamber of Commerce serve as an ad hoc member as well.
That's great. Um, in terms of the, the timing on this, I mean, we can get through that sort of at the end, I guess. My thought process is a lot of the boards, including ours, have already gone kind of through their reconstitution where everybody's kind of signed up for what they're willing to at this point, not to say that, that people wouldn't raise their hand again for a new, new assignment. But I'm just sort of curious, you know, does this, does the working group lead or does a consultant lead and then a working group get phased in? I guess that's sort of my question at this point.
Right. So, so I think, and that's to the next slide really perfectly, Katie, which is that, you know, this is the workload here is going to be really, really large. And so for us to actually have this happen and it's going to require a lot of expertise, a lot of on the ground work. And that's really something that a volunteer committee really isn't, isn't set up to do. So this would be something that I would certainly recommend. And we saw the need for in multiple places to engage an outside consultant and outside resources to really lead this process. There's a bullet list of stuff here of things that we identified to do. This would be kind of in the responsibility tree for this outside resource. But largely, it's bringing together all these different things, you know, coordination and data gathering, having communications, having you know, open forums to discuss what residents like about downtown, what they'd like to see downtown, making sure that businesses are representative and represented and talked and included in this process. And just assist us in all ways, shapes and forms. You know, Lauren is obviously very dedicated, but, you know, especially with our broader zoning redraft or broader zoning, you know, review is fairly taxed. So having an additional resource here would be exactly what we need. And then if we did get the approval for the funding for this and find a resource, I would see the committee then really overseeing that resource. So the committee can be more of a guiding influence, brings the town perspective and just kind of keeps the communication between the boards happening. But the consultant, somebody really needs that's, that's staffed and that's, that's brought on, needs to lead the actual effort here.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe it's a selling point to call it a steering committee instead of a working group. Who knows?
Yeah, open to any, any language.
No, I was, I was just in my mind, like, it sounds like working group sounds like a heavy lift. Has been in a bunch of our models. I'm whether, wondering whether like consultant plus steering committee for this is, is a little nicer sounding opportunity for us to sign up to.
Can I say something, Katie?
Yeah.
Two things. One is, Tim, it is perfectly okay for the town to pass and to actually create rules that property owners must maintain some quality presence of their facilities. It's done all over the state and it's done all over the country. So it's not a, it's not a big deal about it being private property. It is, it is a, can be a policy of the town. So I don't think we have to really worry about it. The second thing is, I don't think you're defining a The second thing is, I don't think you're defining a, a consultant. I think you're defining a, a professional in economic development. And so if you, if you use the term consultant, you're going to get somebody that's split into millions of pieces doing lots of things and it's, and whereas you want somebody on the street actually deeply engaged in the community. So I, I think we shouldn't say it as a temporary thing. It should be a real, real position that this person then feels empowered to actually carry out the work. Just my opinion.
Okay, uh, you know, I, I I absolutely hear what you're saying, and I think um consultant um does sound very generic. Um, and, and the, and the intent, and I know this was because I have had this conversation with Corey and Lauren, is that the resource, the consultant is highly specialized and, and I, and I can't agree with you more that it's a highly special, it's a, it's a highly specialized economic development professional that we're looking for. We're not looking for, you know, somebody who does planning or is a planning consultant and has covered a whole bunch of range of areas. We felt, I mean, this is where it would be helpful, Amy, when we get to kind of the the specific scope in terms of the resource to have your help, but um, we know that we need somebody who has a track record in economic development and, and there are consultants that specialize in these kind of downtown or village revitalization projects, and that's what we're looking for.
Yeah. And just, just to kind of give a little bit of a, a background history, and one of the reasons why this got a little bit delayed to speak to that is that um the uh co- class is part of the metro- metropolitan area planning council, APSY. We're part of the South Shore Coalition and the, the chair of the coalition was uh Betsy Cowan. Uh, she came from an economic development background. Uh, and she was, this was her really, her wheelhouse of expertise. So a lot of the conversations that we were having uh was with the understanding that Betsy, you know, is, is just, is an easy phone call away. I know Lauren worked a lot with Betsy. Betsy has left M A P C, so it kind of, it left us a little bit with a cliff of uh now try, you know, we had kind of a, a good path and now we've kind of had to reorganize, but to your point, Amy, um, Lauren has been uh, already looked up, has been looking up really professionals to lead just this, it would be very specific. So it's not just going to be some random person and some general consultant. It really needs to be hyper focused. So we're on board with that one. And if you think.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it would be, it, it really is th- there are very specific people that do this, but in the end it really is a job. And it's not a, I mean, it's somebody who commits their professional uh activities to, to towns. And so whether we think about this as a short term activity to get the gra- ball rolling and things unfolding. I think in the long run, if we really want the town to sparkle, we want somebody who identifies with the town and decides that they're going to make it their personal project.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be wonderful. And I think we, we need to we need to get there. Um, so I think the first step is to, and we're now kind of, if you would go to the next slide, if you wouldn't mind, Katie. We're now at an interesting moment because the.
Had a cop in.
I just think, I think this group, working group or whatever you want to call it is, is actually a fabulous idea. And there could be a way, because there is in the pipeline, so many new developments, perhaps there's a way to introduce the developers of these new projects coming online to introduce them or incentivize them to work with this working group instead of hiring a broker who's going to find the highest rents, whether that be the real estate office, um, or, or what have you, but there might be a way to connect whatever this working group is, or who would become some of the leaders of it to connect with them, because I think that forging a grassroots campaign of finding the right space, and I think kind of having charrettes and surveys of what's needed downtown as opposed to the real estate offices and banks might be a part of this group, but it's just something to think about because I think that you'd rather not pay those, those retail broker fees and you might, you would get a better eclectic mix of the right retail groups. So I'm just trying to think of the revitalization downtown and how we can kind of take advantage of the impetus of all this new development coming, coming online. I think it might be something to think about, but just want to put that.
That's, that, that's brilliant. I mean, the town could advocate, you know, advocate for, you know, the um, and, and re- reach out to, you know, certain types of businesses rather than it just being a spreadsheet. I think that's phenomenal. So, um, and that would be, I mean, again, this is, you know, again, as I said earlier, this is so many, so many efforts have, have kind of failed to launch. And I think we all have the same vision in our head of, of what this could be. Um, so trying to go step by step here. Um.
Anything on the other side of things, there, the, I'm sure developers would say, yes, I didn't even know that that group is existed. So I'd love to work with them and ask them for, for their help. So.
Yeah, and that's, absolutely. Yeah.
We're going to talk later when it comes to um sidewalks about, you know, community impact dollars and the community impact gifts. And so to the extent that there is this dialogue between developers and the town, um, and there's some specific needs that can be articulated from the working group. Um, that really makes it um shine in that it becomes more focused either. Two things have happened in the past. Either we missed the opportunity to, to have that conversation about the impact, um, community impact agreements or the community impact greenness are written in such a generic way that it's harder to use the dollars even when we figure out what we want. And I think there's an opportunity, just given the level of activity that's going to happen in this small geographic area to kind of marry the two so that you could have community impact agreements really driving some of this change that we're looking for.
There should be some synergies between the two. I completely agree, Kate.
Okay, great. Corey, I'll let you go on to slide six.
Yeah. So, so to kind of, the reason I, I've kind of used the word consultant is, is a, was a little bit intentional. It's that way it's understood by the town not to be uh, you know, a cost that's going to go on forever. And I think if this is something that we want to continue with, because we've all agreed that it provides value and the town has agreed that it provides value, then I'd, I'd love to see this grow into that. Um, but you know, right now we're, we're in a situation where we have um, uh, funding for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Uh, and one of the carve outs for that is for economic development consulting. Uh, that's, you know, in, you know, very explicit in, in the text for allowed uses. Um, so what we're proposing is that we just, we make a, a request for fifty thousand dollars, a carve out of the ARPA funds um, to provide for this consultant, um, to get all these conversations started, to do all of this work. Uh, and then, you know, bring it together in a way that we can, you know, address it and, and move forward properly. So, um, this is, this would be the, the uh the, the language that's included or that Lauren drafted for, for inclusion in the uh the, the Warren article for a fall town meeting, as well as the, the objective um for, for this. Maybe, I don't want to say first round, but this, this opening round of funding for the, the village project. So um, I'm not going to read it all, but um, if you have any questions, this would, this would be the direction that we'd be looking to, to go with it.
And just a quick question. I mean, the, the ARPA funds, um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds have been seven hundred thousand, I think, are already in the hands of Cohasset. The town of Cohasset, there's more funding that could be, that will, that should flow away from, I think, the county level perhaps. Um, in terms of that.
The county is making us go through a separate like application process. They've, at one hand, they've uh, basically said that every community will get their funding that they're entitled to. But they haven't said how they're just going to release it to us. They're gonna, they're gonna apparently set some priorities and have a supply for the funding that's already carved out for us. Um, we've, we've contacted them and written a few times, um, you know, basically with some objections to that, that idea.
And I think that's another million dollars, right? So we've got seven hundred thou- we've got seven hundred thousand in hand and there's another milling that's being held in in escrow for our benefit. It sounds like very um Victorian, like they're, they're only here for our benefit. We just want to get our hands on it. So.
I was going to say, Don could answer and Don just put his hand.
Katie, Don's here. He's raising his hand.
Excellent, Don. I'm going to tag, I'm going to tag you for that.
Good evening. I apologize. I could not get on via my computer, so I'm on the phone and I don't have uh uh, the video is not the best on this phone. So, but to answer your question to ARPA, yeah, the direct aid that we're getting from the federal government uh, is a total of nine hundred thousand dollars. We've received the first tranche, the first half of it already. So we do have a little less than uh five hundred. Um, and then, yeah, there's a, another one point six uh that we're eligible for. Less, I think it's a, a three percent off the top that the county is going to take. And then, yeah, Corey is correct. We're going to have to somewhat jump through hoops and um submit applications. However, that application process has not been laid out for us yet. So we will uh, we'll be waiting that information.
Okay.
But I will definitely keep everybody updated on that.
So just so on the, on the recovery act um funds for the five hundred thousand dollars that we have in hand to release that for specific projects that still requires a town meeting vote?
No, negative. That is border, border select or select board. I apologize.
Okay.
Select board can approve the spending of these funds and that, that is our intent is to uh, a few, God, at this point, uh, over a month ago, I, I presented to the select board just kind of showing the, a, a little breakdown of the direct aid and what will be potentially flowing through Norfolk County and just kind of showing some ideas. And so ultimately it's up to the select board to, to approve uh, you know, what, what the town spends its money on, as long as it's like, you know, what, what Corey said, within the guidelines, which economic development surely is uh, among a number of other things. So.
Okay, that's actually um quite modern grant funding allocations versus what I'm used to, which is like.
So a grant, uh, almost, pretty much all grants come through and I don't require town meeting, don't require additional appropriation. So.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, for the grants like this and cares, it, it allows, you know, flexibility for communities uh to, to make decisions that they need to.
Okay. Um, Jen, I see your hand up. Jen, do you have a question? Um, okay. Um, so I, I guess my only question, um, Corey is, um, we've got. I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm driving and so I'm having technical difficulties. I was just wondering, so when we talk about what kind of businesses we want downtown, who's deciding that? Is that something that the working group is thinking about? Um, like who's the, who's the, who's giving the direction on that? And, and obviously I think we, I hear loud and clear, and I think everyone has said for a long time that we want more diversity of businesses and more foot traffic businesses than banks and real estate offices, but in sort of thinking about how we, if there's going to be a steer, who decides that? And I guess the other question is, is the audience, you know, obviously residents are one clear audience. Um, but I'm wondering, are the topic has come up before about out of town visiting slash, you know, uh, uh, out of town traffic, like when we have the arts festival, but more, more regularly. And I'm wondering whether that audience, one who, who decides whether we're seeking that that economic activity and what that would look like.
Like, yeah, Jen, uh, thank, I mean, excellent thoughts all, all around. Um, so, so I'll just go backwards a little bit. The um, the idea of linking uh events and uh businesses in town was something that we uh discussed quite a bit. And that is um something which is a little bit of a separate silo as we've, as we dove into stuff, we found uh, a, a lot of it being very focused is a really good way to, to kind of make progress. Um, and if you adding kind of horizontally things, well, we kind of end up going in circles a little bit. So this was kind of the one thing that we were able to, to dive all the way down into. But on the, on the topic of kind of connecting different events, um, you know, we, we had conversations with, um, you know, uh, uh art center, different restaurants in town. Um, uh, some of the people that run the different uh sports events in town about just ways to try to encourage um uh, groups to, to, these events to connect. We actually learned interestingly that a lot of the downtown village businesses don't love the arts festival because they don't see the, basically what they, they find is that um it keeps their local regular customers away. Uh, and at the same time, this, there was a study that was done by either MAPS or the South Shore Chamber. Uh, and they looked into dollars that could have been spent in Cohasset that were spent other way, uh, other places, resident dollars that are going outside of town. Uh, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but there was, there was a fair number there. So you know, I think really the, the, the the goal that's more graspable is to kind of keep our dollars local, um, r- rather than, that's an easier, lower hanging fruit than to try to bring people to, from outside in. Um, there's a lot of money that we're not, that people are not spending in town that they could be. And that's certainly something that we, we can easily change. On the topic of how we encourage the correct type of businesses, that goes to the correct types of spaces. You know, part of the problem with, or part of the reason we have a lot of real estate and offices is because the spaces aren't conducive to retail, they aren't conducive to food service. Um, you know, there aren't spaces to that somebody can then easily launch, uh, you know, anything but some offices, uh, you know, whether it's parking or whether it's power or ventilation or ceiling height or total square footage. Uh, I did speak to um quite a bit to the class at Learning Studio. Uh, and she's been very successful with the pandemic. She was obviously very worried. However, she expressed a little frustration. She could use more space. She could double her space, but there's no space for her to do that. Um, so us ensuring, you know, when you're thinking about types of businesses, they all need a certain type of space. So that's why we can kind of plan to be sure we have the right spaces. That way we get the right businesses and we're not constantly making, you know, law offices and real estate offices and accountants. And no offense to those professions, but they're not too exciting. But anyway, I hope that explains it a little bit, Jennifer.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you so much.
I, I love, I love the direct correlation between the correct space. I mean, look at some of those buildings, they're, they're quaint. But some of them are odd shaped and, and you just know when you walk in that, that if you were trying to think about either having a different business or expanding your existing business, you, you bump up against lots of barriers in terms of like, how do I make this more?
Um, how do I bring an inventory? It's, it's really, yeah, it's a lot. And um, I mean, even, you know, something like Atlantic Bagel, I mean, that's a very unique, you know, deployment of a, of a home. Uh, and it works, but you know, it, it just, you know, it, it certainly, uh, it certainly makes do, but isn't, isn't kind of what, you know, a, a good bakery would, would normally be in. So.
Yeah.
Anyway, and then just, just to kind of circle back to the idea, you know, we have this born article partially because we wanted to be sure that this was um, really fleshed out fully. Um, if we were to say, okay, we're not going to, we don't need the Warren article. We don't need appropriation in the budget we're going to use from ARPA. Uh, that's because we as a town have made that conscious decision to use the ARPA funds for this purpose. Um, so we thought it's probably best to have all this text ready to go. Um, that way we all understand what the goals are, what the money is going to be used for. That way, if we do want to appropriate it in through another mechanism, we can do that. But if we choose to do it through ARPA, it's done properly.
Okay. So we've got option one, which is a special town meeting article that would be a one time expense as part of a broader one time expense allocation out of free cash flow. We've done that year in and year out. And then option two is more unique to um COVID and grant funding, which is that ARPA, which could be released just by the select board and doesn't require a special town meeting. So we've got option one and option two, both of them for a fifty thousand dollar allocation to start this process. Okay.
Yeah. And this like board obviously is looking for guidance with, you know, if, if ARPA, if, you know, boards like yourself, obviously. That's why we, we, you know, we're trying to bring this around a little bit. You know, uh, a recommendation or an endorsement of a certain pot of funding, uh, we're open to, to listening to.
I guess my, I'm going to sort of close the presentation in part so I can um see more people. Um, but um I guess my question is kind of directed at Lauren and, and Don, but not to put you on the spot, you know, on, but I'm going to, as I usually do. Um, you know, we did not get the community one stop for growth grant, as I understand it for Elm Street, correct?
That is correct.
So that is unfortunate because it was a big nut. It was five hundred thousand dollars. And so um, we are now faced with, we've got a priority that is on the cusp of getting to the next stage that needs five hundred thousand dollars of funding. I would think that that would be a priority in terms of towns, not to say that our fifty thousand requests from the village revitalization isn't, they're obviously orders of magnitude different, but the my, am I correct in thinking, Don, that the Elm Street quarter could be a um an America Recovery Act request, or is that, that incorrect?
Uh, so what portion of this are you looking at? So the, were the five hundred that we did not get as a grant, the construction? Um, I guess, let me, let me put it this way. There's so many restrictions on it, but at the same time, I'm going through a process of determining revenue loss calculation, which I get to run by the auditors to figure out where we actually stand with that calculation. And what, basically what it does is a calculus number of what they, they consider uh quote unquote revenue loss over the last eighteen months to compare a couple of years ago to what we actually received in calendar year twenty. Uh, and w- once we determine that calculation, that can basically be used for any general governmental purpose. Um, we still need to document exactly what we're going to use it for because it's still under um, under this grant. So we need to make sure that we, we, we write the narrative so that it, it complies, but um, I don't see. Um, I don't see. Kind of a hard thing, it's not really my call.
Yeah, I'm not gonna put you.
To to use this, uh, I I guess it's, I'm just, I'm actually looking at something right now. And it says revenue replacement funds can be used for a wide range of government services, including but not limited to roads, cybersecurity, a handful of other things. Now, uh, again, uh, to me, roads is building the road maybe. Uh, you could maybe stretch it to say that the consulting and the work to get you to the actual construction. But, you know, I mean, it's time, it's kind of a stretch. We did meet internally to talk about this, that we didn't get the grant and what can we do? Uh, I don't know if that's ready to talk about publicly what we can do, which though, trying to bounce some things around, but. Um, we may have, we may have a pathway to break down that five hundred thousand dollars into a a smaller ask to get us. I believe, if if I remember right, Lauren, it was to get uh, the consulting services through. Estimate estimate drawings, I forget the term you used.
Yes, so um, yeah, so so originally, just to give some, and thank you, Don, for that explanation. What we did originally, the five hundred thousand dollar ask from the um, the one-stop-for-growth funding was to get this project essentially like shovel-ready. As they call it, so that would be through, you know, like ninety percent construction design, um, ready for that. So what we've asked the consultants to do is to break down sort of what this phasing would be. And some of you will be familiar with, like, because of the the tip process, you'll see like the twenty-five percent design, et cetera, et cetera. So what we've broken, we're planning to break it into two more phases instead of just phase two, to get it shovel-ready. So we would do thirty percent design and engineering and then another segment that would go to the really, you know, construction detail level drawings. Um, so like Don mentioned, we we've been working internally to try to figure out some other sources and we'll be um, hopefully having an update on that. You know, by the end of this month and plan to go to um, to capital budget, give an update on this as well soon. So it's, there's, there's plans to keep the Elm Street um, initiative in motion. Um, and while there may be some use of tapping into ARPA funds, I don't think that, you know, that that necessarily is, needs to be. Totally relied on for this portion of the next phase of it.
Okay, so I guess I I was just trying to tease that out, Corey, because, you know, my answer as to whether we should. Whether the recommendation from the master plan implementation committee should be that fifty thousand is requested from America Recoveries or from free cash flow. Was a little bit dependent on whether the Elm Street corridor ask was gonna utilize that five hundred thousand dollars. And it sounds like maybe part of it, but not the full nut, so it. I I almost, it, to me, from what I've just, the the little bit I've heard, it sounds like. We're actually gonna be funding more of that five hundred thousand dollars out of capital budget or free cash flow at this point. Um, even in a phase one and phase two approach, which leaves the America Recoveries Act request. On a clearer path in some ways than it does the free cash flow r- request at special town meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's especially because, I mean, the fifty thousand, I mean, ARPA, it's not a huge amount of money, it's a great amount of money, but, you know, it can get chewed up really fast. So I think being very smart about carving it up and kind of spreading as much as possible. The other thing I'll just mention with Elm Street is, you know, there's obviously a lot of uh, infrastructure funding that's coming through the different levels. So this may also be an opportunity for us to say, well, what what can we do to keep this on the rails? Um, hoping that or expecting that there'll be uh, greater opportunities in the future. So um, that's also something to consider, uh, because this may not be the end of of opportunities for that project.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess my my best advice, and I'll then I'll open it up to the rest of the committee at this point is. Uh, staying close to where the funding source for, or how the funding source for Elm Street Corridor Working Group. That five hundred thousand um, comes from is an indication of you should not go there. Your your village recovery, so if they're, if they're breaking left, we break right to the other funding sources is at least my initial reaction. Um, and it sounds like that may mean breaking towards the the one that you'd already identified, which requires requires select board approval only. The Recovery Act funds. Um, does anybody else have any other comments or questions on village revitalization? All right.
Yes, I did, sorry.
Yeah.
I just, I I thought, uh, correct me, Jen's first part of her question was, who would determine the uses for the village? And I would suggest, as a matter of process, you know, the rewrite of the bylaw is gonna report also include. Do the table, but this, this new group, committee, whatever. Call it, um, might take on the charge of making the recommendations about any change. Uses from the village that exist from what exists today. It takes one thing off the zoning working groups plate. Um, and since they're gonna focus on the economics and viability of different businesses. You know, we will need to table our, to um, tailor our table of use regulations to accommodate. Desired businesses are in the village, so. Want to think about tasking this new group to take that on the stuff.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, Tim made a point earlier, I mean, ultimately, the the steering group or the working group for the village revitalization. You know, can collect information and data from business partners and from citizens, but ultimately, it's going to be the. The developer or the business owner that makes the decision as to whether they they come to to come to Cohasset or not. So like, while we can say we want a a pretty pony, the pretty pony may not come to us. But we we can make it easier by, as you were saying, in making our table of uses and our zoning bylaws. We can create other incentives to make some of those pretty ponies come our direction.
I mean, I don't know of anything in our current uses that are allowed in the village that are, you know, objectionable or or deterrent. To attracting certain businesses. Uh, but I think this subcommittee should at least look at them and see if we should make any changes. Recommend them to the larger zoning working groups effort.
Yeah.
Um, could I say something?
Yes.
Now that I'm unmuted and I'm I'm somewhat coherent, excuse me, uh, if the oxycodone is speaking. Um, could somebody address the issue of why the village, what happened to the village? What happened that our town just became the non-existent village center that it is today? With the surplus, you know, it's nice to have, excuse me, nice to have the restaurants. Um, but the, you know, real estate agents, like six real estate agents, no convenience store, no nut. What happened, I I granted COVID, but before, that was happening before this. What what do you people think, or what could somebody point to, please? I'm I'm, please.
Uh, I, we wrote about this in the uh, master plan report about economic development. Essentially, we like towns like ourselves and larger and smaller. Uh, got swept up in first suburban, well, the end of the war, then suburbanization. Then the uh, increasing high-value jobs in Boston, the commuting. Um, and and as a result, and the development of big box stores and um, chain, chain businesses. And so a lot of our activities couldn't withstand the difference in cost, uh, you know, price pressures. That were coming out of much larger organizations that had much lower costs. People, and so now today it's at the extreme, right? So we have to keep in mind the fact that people are ordering more stuff on the the lo- the web than they've ever done before. And there's nobody actually saying that that's gonna change. So we just kind of went, we just kind of went with what happened to the rest of the United States. And I think that that uh, one of the things that didn't happen was it didn't get caught. There are communities that have been able to withstand it, but they caught it very early, they created rules, they had processes and. Um, you know, we we had different points of view, I think, that that didn't allow any kind of cohesion to form.
But that's, that's what I'm asking, like, how did this happen to us? You know, how how did we, I, having been here all my life and and remembering what things were like. And then how did we end up with no convenience store and and uh, six real estate? How to, with, you're revitalizing the village. How, how the real estate agents a- a- appeal to? Anybody walking into town unless, it, this just kills me, I'm sorry, and I I'll stop talking, okay?
Uh, Julie, if I just made, I I don't, I can't answer how we got here, but I do think that the last couple of years, you've seen. Uh, very encouraging signs when it comes to, you know, you have a couple of new restaurants, you obviously have a very successful coffee shop. And a lot of the businesses that you see in town, I mentioned the Learning Center, you've got a a bunch of new um, uh, clothing retailers. Are very, are new owners, younger owners, uh, kind of a new generation. And, you know, they feel like they've got some momentum, they speak of the village as, we love being down here, we wish there were more people, but we love it here. We wouldn't think of anywhere to move anywhere else, and we just want to build upon that. So I I think we've, we've turned the corner, uh, and I think we've got some really great momentum going forward. And that's why this is kind of the right time to do this, is to be sure that we can capture that momentum and and the business owners that want to stay downtown can. And new businesses that are saying, hey, that Cohasset downtown seems like a lot of fun, we have the space for them too. Um, I think, I think we're in the right direction now. Um, so I can't answer how we got there, but I think we were definitely on the upswing right now.
Yeah.
I remember somebody, I remember you said before, and I think at the last meeting, that that there were, I think it was this meeting. Uh, MPIC, that a lot of younger owners were getting more involved.
Yeah.
Younger property owners.
Correct, and business owners and now property owners, yeah, it's definitely. An influx of new new owners, and that's the best thing we could ask for.
I was just gonna say, this is, I, there there are two sort of trends, like counter trends happening right now. One being that I think there is like a noticeable uh, focus on local business that didn't exist, I think. Ten or twenty years ago, and then there's also, obviously from COVID, I think there are gonna be more people working from home in perpetuity, which means there are more people. There are more, there's more economic activity, I mean, I've definitely noticed that, but I think some of that will remain. Um, I was gonna just mention one thing that Cassie had actually raised on affordable housing, which she was asking whether there's like subsidized commercial. And and I don't think that fits within affordable housing mandate, and I don't think it fits within sort of that scope. But it did make me think, you know, if as a town, we thought that having a convenience store was gonna be a huge benefit. There are ways that we can encourage that econo-, you know, through subsidy, if that were so important. So I I guess I would just say, I don't think that towns do that generally, but if there were, you know, if we were trying to create. A downtown that was gonna service residents, you know, there are a lot of creative ways to do that. So, anyway.
Yeah, I I like your observation on sort of the post-COVID work from home, it's funny, like, uh, you know, my. Our sandwich dollars used to be spent in New York City or Boston, our sandwich dollars are now being spent in Cohasset. Um.
Anchor and sale and fresh meat.
So, yeah, exactly, so there are some opportunities there. So I do wanna, um, I do wanna close this conversation out, because we do have a bunch of other stuff on the agenda that's um, that's equally important and exciting. So Corey, thank you for your time this evening, and, you know, we are, we are very supportive of the village revitalization. Um, when we get to the point where we need to write a charge and we need to find somebody from our committee to support this. Um, we will, 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 somebody will sign up. Um, and more importantly, um, however we can support in terms of that funding request. Um, if it's a matter of coming to the select board, if you go the Recovery Act fund route. Um, please make sure that we we know so that we can be there, or if it's special town meeting, like, we will figure that one out, it sounds like.
Great, yeah, I'll I'll reflect to the board that um, this seems to be a general consensus that ARPA would be in appropriate use. Um, and if we could, you know, uh, we'll figure out if we need a, you know, a kind of official vote from from your group, just to be sure that we're all on the same page, we'll let you know.
Okay, that's great.
Alright, alright, thanks, everybody.
Okay, great, um, so, Don, I'm gonna tee up you, Lauren and I, to talk sidewalk funding. So we've, we've kind of split the transportation and circulation conversation into two pieces on the agenda. The first was sidewalk funding and then the plan, I know it's a little bit backwards, but I wanted to be a little bit respectful of Don's. Time as a guest. Um, so we had talked, when we had put together our um, year two objective around transportation and circulation. That there were, there were two pieces to it, one related to three A North and South, kind of that corridor redesign and development. And then there was a second piece related to sidewalks, safety, um, and complete streets. Um, the, the second piece, that sidewalk safety, complete streets, is much more in the control of Cohasset. Than the sort of the tip process as it relates to a state highway segment, um, whether it's through the north or the south. Um, and since it wasn't our control, we could start to do things like. Put together a, take the the priorities from the complete streets plan and lay out a a schematic around. How we might prioritize those thirty-two segments and how, and then how we might fund them. So the question came up around what might a funding scenario look like? What would be the mechanisms to fund um, a sidewalk fund? Um, and with that, um, Don, I'm gonna turn it over to you, just to kind of talk broadly. About two things, one, what you found relative to um, any examples of specific. Uh, or excuse me, general um, development fees being applied to sidewalk or um. Traffic study fund, and then what we found in terms of more specific um, mitigation funds. So I'll start there, because that's one of the conversations that we had was exactly that, is to, can we create new revenues? Um, in order to tackle some of this sidewalk funding? And the question comes back to, can you have a general um, overall tax? Or do you have to do it on a more specific mitigation basis? So I'll pose that question to you.
So I I think for clarification, we should definitely ask council, but from my understanding and discussion with colleagues. Uh, a a general mitigation, I don't believe was found to be legal, to just charge a fee for no service. So when you get into the impact fees, mitigation fees, they're usually. It's because of the impact specifically that that development being posed is going to cause on your town. So you have a new hundred, two hundred unit development coming in, what's that gonna do? Uh, we may need a traffic light now in that certain area, because of the increase, we may, we may need uh, additional police staff. Uh, we may need more uh, equipment, whatever it may be, but a lot of those agreements are specific to. That development project. Um, I've reached out to at least, I have a close-knit group, six or seven colleagues. None of them have a general mitigation or general fee. Um, it's all based on, and and some of them are are large. Uh, one community that I talked to just received over uh, two big developments, about three million dollars. Um, but again, it's surrounded the area specific. And the actual impact that that development may do to that community. Um, I did, you and I talked about uh, a blanket ten thousand dollar fee maybe that that Wellesley charges. Again, I I have a good relationship with Wellesley, I I reached out and they have heard no such thing. Um, my contact in the treasurer there confirmed the building department. They do not, she even noted that within their research, they found that it 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 is illegal to charge a fee. Without providing a service for that. Um, so, I don't know if that answers your question, uh, but that's what I've I've found in my my discussions with colleagues and in some of my research.
Yeah, so our original hope had been that there was some hail Mary out there where we could have a general mitigation. Fee um, that could be applied broadly to our transportation and circulation needs um, in town. And and what I'm hearing you saying is that doesn't exist, um, you weren't able to find evidence of it. In Wellesley or or the other, you know, six or seven communities that you've reached out to. I think, Lauren, you had a similar experience when you went out through, till Don went out through his um. Budget and finance um, town accountant network, and Lauren, you did a similar um, search with um, your planning colleagues, correct?
Right, exactly, and you know, there's communities that have done sort of a similar approach, but every time it needs to be tied to a geographic location. So for example, um, you know, some communities have done where they do like an impact fee based on the zoning district that they're in. Whether it be an overlay or the underlying, but it needs to have a rational connection as to why, you know, you can't, you can't take an impact fee. And then apply it to something, you know, across town that has no real, real clear rational nexus to. And that was the feedback that I've gotten every time, is that it needs to have a clear and rational connection as to why you're using that fee to, uh, you know, to support that initiative.
Okay. And Amy, I'm not sure that you saw this in the packet, and Tom, I can send this to you since you're on the planning board, but I think. And Amy, I'm not sure that you saw this in the packet. And Tom, I can send this to you since you're on the planning board, but I think this was. What you had gathered, Lauren, correct, in terms of um examples?
Yes, and actually, um I will state that this is work, you'll see a date that's old on it. This is work that I did uh when I was in Milton, actually, because in Milton, we were looking to do sort of a similar traffic revolving fund. And we're trying to tie it to um a district, actually. So and these are some examples of other communities that have done it. Um you know, there's different fee structures that people have used, but again, it's just that it it has to have that that clear connection as to why you're using that. And how you're, you know, making that rationale.
Thanks for doing this.
Is this what Boston calls linkage?
Yes.
Yep. But I, but I thought it was, I thought it was a interesting to sort of see. You know, the second page here, there were some concrete metrics like for Marshfield, which isn't too far a field. Uh uh far a field for us that they had a mitigation fund for the traffic impact along Route one thirty-nine. Again, specific to your point, Lauren, but it was three hundred dollars per parking space. Or in Waltham, maybe not as similar to Cohasset, it was three dollars per foot of gross area. Um in office of retail and a separate for gross area of multifamily or industrial. So there are. Benchmarks out there, or this one in Woburn, a nice three percent of the proposed development cost. That would be really nice. But it gave me hope that um perhaps working with the planning board, who would really be front and center. On on ensuring that these kinds of impact or mitigation fees could be part of the discussion. That there were metrics out there that we could use um to have those discussions. So I thought this was, you know, helpful, albeit as you admit, Lauren, maybe a bit out to date. Um here's Needham. Fifteen hundred dollars for each parking space. Um Lexington, again, uh uh five dollars per net floor area. And then um, yeah, so that was, and then there was this little blurb at the bottom, which I found super helpful in terms of like. Where does, where does the power to actually um. Where does the power to the town come from to um set or request mitigation fees? And it it was um, I thought the highlighted hub sentence was interesting. It's important to note that legislator, the legislature explicitly authorizes the creation of mitigation funds. Or until there is a court ruling based on the challenge to an existing fund, so you can do it up until when you're challenged. And it looked like um mitigation funds, and I haven't had a chance to go read this, but if anybody wants some bedtime reading. It looks like there is some mass general law under, Tom, you may know this, under forty A, section nine, where you can actually um require mitigation funds. So um I think for me, there was some hope that in working with the planning board, there could be funds. Um that could be identified um specifically for um impacts on. Areas of the community where there is development, particularly commercial development happening. Um but when it came to a sort of a general mitigation fee for overall residential housing, I think there's not any. There wasn't any evidence that that existed. Does that make sense to everybody? Amy, I I don't know how you're, so part of what I was hoping today, we could do is get through the funding conversation and then get through this. The sort of the twenty-year sidewalk plan conversation. Um but eventually, what I'd love to do is take the conversation from this group. From the master plan implementation and package it up a bit and take it on a little bit of a roadshow to planning. To have a conversation around um sidewalk, sidewalk funding and how planning could be helpful specifically as it relates to mitigation funds. And then have a similar conversation with open space and rec because they can kind of co-support. Anything we want to do from a sidewalk or transportation and circulation perspective. And eventually take this to select board, um which would be an important step. So mitigation funds um can be a piece of it, but they're gonna have to be directed to the the district. Where the impact is taking um place and it can't be just used to across town address where we want a sidewalk. So that's sort of that. Um Don, I don't know if you want to speak generally. Um because we're not just limited, we're not just limited to um general mitigation funds. There are other ways for us to fill the coffers. So I was hoping you might talk a little bit about the potential to um establish. A um a specialized um. Stabilization fund or is that the right term? Is it specialized or is it stabilization fund or the targeted stabilization fund?
Sure. So under chapter forty, section five B stabilization funds, uh city or town may create one or more stabilization funds. Essentially for any lawful purpose. So on our books right now, we have one, two, three, about six of them. Between uh general stabilization, capital stabilization, we have a sewer capital stabilization, sewer betterment stabilization. I mean, essentially, they can be set up by town meeting uh for any specific purpose. Uh in town meeting could essentially also repurpose any stabilization as well. Um so that is, that is one way to to set up a segregated fund. Uh to accumulate resources. Uh but but how do you funnel? So. I mean, one thing that we talked about was kind of like other post-employment benefits. Uh come up with the potential funding policy to go to the select board, something that is is supported by a broad group. Of committees within town uh to fund a hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, just throwing a hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget right now would be very tough. Not saying that we can't do that over time, or, you know, just like our old ped funding strategy. Um as long as we get to that goal between annual town meeting and the appropriation of free cash or special town meeting. You know, we reach, we reach our funding policy and we reach our target. So um that is gonna be more up to to, I guess, you both. And how you want to try to market that and and kind of talk to the select board about uh a funding policy on this. Because it's really gonna require public support um to do so, especially if uh you potentially do a stabilization fund. And you know, you could do it in conjunction with capital budget. And now they oversee capital budgeting and uh you know, sidewalks is a capital item. The reason Katie and I talked about and Lauren, it talked about potentially a separate additional stabilization fund is to kind of just. Segregate the, I guess, oversight of this, if it would be a a generally accepted and supported program. Uh and again, I don't know who would necessarily be the oversight on who determine, you know, which segment would be done when. When we initially talked, there was about four to five hundred thousand dollars to 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 fund a individual segment. And again, I I would, I would assume based on uh what I saw today in some of your spreadsheets. Is that you've identified all of your segments and you you'd have a prioritization of those segments. But yeah, you know, having a separate fund, yeah, there's one more account and thing for me to handle on the books, which isn't a big deal, but it could. It it could be beneficial so that that money stays in its own fund. It doesn't get commingled with capital budget funding when trying to think of uh our overall capital plan. Again, I I don't know how they'll take it. I don't know if they'll think it would be infringing on what they they oversee as a capital budget committee. But it it's an option. It's something that can be definitely discussed.
Yeah. And I, the part of, I mean, Tim will appreciate this analogy because we 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 set up a. Or we had a specialized stabilization fund for our post-employment benefits liability. But what we did was put in place a funding policy that we got the select board to sign off on that had an annual funding target. Um and so that there was a steady commitment year in, year out through either the operating budget. Or through free cash flow at special town meeting to hit a number that would go into quote unquote, the savings account. So the specialized stabilization fund is really nothing more than a savings account that the town votes. At town meeting to set up for a um, you know, as a a an intended purpose. And in this case, it would be sidewalk or whatever we want to call it, sidewalk or other transportation and safety. Uh initiatives. And um it would have a policy around it that would describe how the transfers in are made. And how the transfers out are made. And and both of those transfers in and transfers out. Um under forty B have to be governed by town meeting. In some scenarios, the stabilization fund doesn't work because you're, you need to take funds out in between. Town meeting, but when we're talking about major projects like sidewalks, we know six, nine, twelve months in advance what we're gonna want to do. So being tied to transfers in and transfers out at at um town meeting doesn't really seem like a big hurdle to me. Um what I like about the idea of having a specialized stabilization fund is that we know that some of these projects are gonna take. Us accumulating, as Don was indicating, you know, half a million dollars, and that's gonna take us a couple of years to do it. By having a stabilization fund, you, which is, you know, essentially a savings account, you can kind of see the accumulations happening. Um versus when we do capital budget appropriations. It's all managed in one lump sum and it becomes Don on a spreadsheet. Um literally finding all of the capital appropriations that have been made across multiple fiscal years. And adding them up to get here. I mean, it sounds, it sounds kind of um. It it, I don't know whether it sounds easy or hard, but the reality is, is that. It the appropriations don't aggregate in a neat way, where in a stabilization fund they do. Uh so that's point number one. And point number two, you know, we need to sort of test this with council. Um but the question remains whether if we had a specialized stabilization fund and we had, I don't know. A leftover funds from mitigation fee that we used in a specific section, whether we could transfer those leftover mitigation fees into the stabilization fund. So instead of getting trapped in one area of our financials, the stabilization fund becomes a way to again aggregate these bits and pieces. Um and when we had talked last, uh you know, we had said that, you know, our sidewalk funding is gonna come from not only what we can bootstrap together. As a community, whether that's our own savings or through, you know, smart mitigation fee conversations with the, by the planning board. But it's also gonna come from complete streets. And so we're gonna have multiple funding sources here that I think. If there's some way to kind of aggregate them and and have um a single point where we were tracking them in a stabilization fund, it it might. Make the overall um visibility and our ability to hit these big targets every. Um you know, four or five years in terms of new sidewalk segments possible. So I'm gonna stop there and pause. Um and let the group ask questions about sidewalk funding.
Katie, just in reference to your um, the MB, the MPIC letter of support, is that to release the remaining funds? From the Avalon Bay? Or has that been completely, I don't think all those funds have been used, right? The Avalon Bay?
None of them, basically.
There's been some shortcuts and things, got some sidewalks done up there on there. I didn't know where those funds came from, but if it's, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the process. If if those funds are there, why are they not being released?
Well, so this is. So the, see Avalon Bay gift account, um was, it is, it's basically a a mitigation fee. And the gift had codicils associated with it. And the codicils in the gift, um there were, there were two gift accounts. One, which was more general, which has been tapped, um and has a balance of like seventy-five thousand dollars in it. There was a bigger um gift of three hundred thousand, which is now um.
Now like half a million dollars.
It's now like a half a million dollars. That bigger gift account, the codicil around that gift directly related to improvements. Um on Sawyer Street signaling at three A and Sawyer, which we don't control, the state controls. So the reason the funds haven't been released is because a project that meets the codicil hasn't made it through permitting.
And so we couldn't just do the sidewalk and wait for the state to figure out their permitting?
We we can do the, we can do the sidewalk, absolutely, but as perspective, the sidewalk project has gone. At least once before to Concom and not gotten through. This is the second attempt to get this project through Concom. Um had it gotten through before, these funds probably wouldn't have been there. But I guess what I'm saying is that the the gift itself has specific um. Uh wording in it that requires us to use it for a series of um types of projects on Sawyer Street. And so that's because we haven't been able to accomplish those projects to date. We haven't been able to release the funds. We now have a second attempt at that sidewalk segment um where we could release the funds. I don't think, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to take any action to release those funds. That would be either a select board vote or um perhaps even you as town accountant can match up the gift agreement to the actual funding request. But um what we're faced with right now is not a hundred percent support from all the Concom members around the fact that this segment is. A needed segment by the community, and that's where the letter of support comes in.
So it doesn't need town meeting, we've already accepted this as as mitigation or gift, however you want to call it. Instead of gift account, this is a mitigation, it's an agreement uh funded through the planning board agreement. So uh it is effectively a mitigation fund, mitigation account. But this does have specific things tied to it. Like you said, design permitting, construction of a sidewalk, any related improvements along Sawyer Street. Uh new traffic signal and any related improvements, Sawyer Street, three A. Now DPW is using, utilizing about seventy-six thousand dollars. We, we previously talked about that. To start looking in and and work with a uh a group, uh the company's called Tech. Uh to work on the CJC Highway King Street Tip Initiative, which is part of. Part of the the purpose for these funds. And then also for Tetra Tech, which is Sawyer Street Sidewalk Permit. So they are working right now on a couple of initiatives that relate to this, this funding specifically.
Yeah. So I guess to answer your question, um some of the, I guess what Donna is saying is that some of the money is being utilized in the design phase. But when it um, once we, if we assuming that the project makes it pass the design phase and through the permitting phase with. Concom, the construction money would also come out of it.
Whatever amount we we can fund with with the remaining balance.
Yes. And and I just shared on the screen, Don, the the codicil, which you were referring to, design permitting, construction of a sidewalk. And any related improvements along Sawyer Street um to a new traffic signal related to improvements at the intersection of Sawyer Street and three A. So that's what that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's accumulated to five hundred thousand dollars has. That's how it's tied in terms of the language. Because we haven't had a project that met that criteria, we haven't been able to spend it. The second fund um was a gift of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was much more general. Which was the acquisition and development implementation of new procedures and equipment that would improve the town's operating performance. And and there have been drawdowns on that um that are older in date. Um there was a drawdown in fiscal two thousand thirteen and fourteen um that drew it down significantly. But since then, the principal accumulated back up to seventy thousand dollars. So there's. Five hundred thousand here and seventy thousand in the two Avalon gift accounts. So. But this is the danger of gift accounts is that, or.
Well, that's what's unfortunate about it. It's almost like we can't.
So some of it comes down to the language that's negotiated in the mitigation or the gift. Um and making sure that depending on what you're looking for, you're either making it as generic as possible or as specific as possible. In terms of the project you're targeting. Um but yeah, once the gift is given with that codicil and accepted by the town. You know, I assume at some point, Don, if like, I don't know, Sawyer Street sinks, you know, the top point of Sawyer Street just disappears into a sinkhole. And we had no way of ever utilizing those funds. I'm sure that there's a way that we could transfer it out of the gift agreement, but that would be town meeting. And a whole bunch of stuff, so um.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the the paragraph right under what you just read. I mean, it's pretty specific. Now, again, I don't know how long we've had this money, what, since fiscal thirteen? So almost ten years, right? Granted, funds may be reallocated by the select board and used for other transportation-related improvements in the town if mass deal. if Mass DOT does not approve the improvements described above. So uh, again, I don't know how long they have to kinda how long time has to go by before that is met or we find out if Mass DOT does not approve the the improvements. But um, again, I don't, I don't, I wasn't really here when this happened. So I don't know what the real intent was other than what it specifically says in that first paragraph.
And and the sidewalks, you know, the the sidewalks that they describe in the in in point number one, part of those sidewalks are controlled by the state, the ones that are along three A, the part that's down Sawyer is within our control. And that's the one that's before permitting right now with um Concom.
Right.
So um, I guess where I wanna kind of wrap up this conversation for today is that um there are sort of two thoughts that um came forward relative to sidewalk funding. One was um working with the planning board to develop more specific strategies and perhaps benchmarking around how they can um engage in mitigation fee conversations as it relates to development projects and put those dollars to work in the specific districts or areas that are being impacted to address transportation and circulation um or other mitigation needs uh um as a result of the development. Um, conversation number two was um taking this concept of a specialized stabilization fund um a step further and kind of laying out what that funding policy might look like. Um, and what we might um suggest in terms of perhaps an initial annual funding target that could grow over time. Again, I think Don indicated that, you know, taking a hundred thousand out of the operating budget is probably a nonstarter. But could you start more modestly at, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars a year and have that increase at whatever? Um, you know, ten, twenty, whatever the, you know, some percentage. Um, or could you set a little higher target, like a hundred thousand per annum and give the funding policy the flexibility, let them uh let the select board and the town manager um fund that from either the operating budget or free cash flow at year end, which is um sometimes an easier ask. Um, and it's frankly what the the OPEB committee landed out doing. We landed out giving the town and the select board the flexibility to choose whether they were gonna hit the annual funding target from one of two um funding sources, operating budget or free cash. We didn't care. We just wanna make sure that they funded the total, not every year. And they have. And so I I am optimistic that a funding policy, if there was enough buy-in from the community that a specialized stabilization fund related to sidewalks was important, we could do it. And we've done this before um with the roadways plan. And we've committed to a twenty-year roadways plan and we've been chunking away at it. So if there's a will, there's a way when it comes to funding. It's just a question of how do we structure it? And how do we communicate why this is important, which kind of gets to the prioritization plan, which was up next for conversation?
Yeah, my only caution, Katie, is that if you have too many different special interests going after that free cash flow, uh, OPEB is gonna start getting nicked. So I think we just have to be cautious.
Yeah, no, I I I I agree that there's only so much free cash flow to go around every year, for sure.
Unless we budget that, that uh, extra cash.
Which we. Yeah, I mean, these, these are all, this is all, I mean, the the on the flip side, we can do nothing and never have anything ever, you know. It becomes, it becomes a conversation around trade-offs, for sure. Um. Um, so with that, Don, I appreciate your time tonight. Um, and I know that you've got a wee one and a long commute. So if you wanna sign off, I totally understand, cuz we're gonna hop to the next topic unless there are any other questions.
Great. Thank you for having me. And uh, let me know if you need anything else going forward. Be happy to help.
Yep.
All right, can I?
Thanks, Sal.
Thank you. Um, so the next thing I wanted just to um kind of preview was um, we had, we had agreed that we're gonna begin to kind of have a conversation about um what a how we could go about putting together a a prioritization plan for sidewalks and other um complete street um improvements that were articulated coming out of the master plan and out of the um Complete Streets program. So you guys have seen this spreadsheet before and Jen, um, like you thought, you know, like once you start reading through the kind of the project descriptions and start thinking about how can you bucketize them. There was a pretty easy um set of three buckets that came out of um me looking at them. There's thirty-two projects in total. And when I read through them and kind of began to think about like a first pass of how could we organize them and explain this to the community, to the planning board, to the select board. There were three buckets. One was sidewalks, and there's actually eleven sidewalk segments that are in the thirty-two um priorities that are articulated. There are ten, what I would call, safety and shared roadway. Um, and a lot of this has to do with signage um and other traffic calming measures that you can take to um create a better and safer environment for both pedestrian and for um and for and for bicycles. And then there were another eleven projects that fell in either crosswalks or some kind of ADA compliance need as it relates to transportation and circulation. So um thirty-two projects roughly split a third, a third, a third between these um three categories. Um, so that was kind of my first observation. My second observation was that when it comes to kind of costing this out, I'll show you in each of the spreadsheets. I tried to come up and I I started working on this with Brian and Jason, and I still need them to kind of help me fine tune it. But I don't think they were. There wasn't anything they kind of overly objected to in terms of how I was costing out some of this. So I I looked at each of the three types of projects and some of the projects in the spreadsheet had been costed out as part of the Complete Streets project. So I used those plus some knowledge that we had gathered about the cost of sidewalks and began to kind of develop a rough estimate for what each of these categories might cost. And so what I came up with was just as a first pass is that the eleven ADA and crosswalk projects just based on a first pass might cost in total half a million dollars. So that felt like, wow, that's kind of like neat. I mean, could we like literally cross off all of these projects in one swoop? Or do we wanna do one sidewalk segment? Um, the other thing, when I went over to safety and shared roadway, this is probably a much more crude number out of the three. But there's ten projects there. And just based on the couple that were costed out, it could cost upwards of two million dollars to do those ten projects, which sounds expensive um versus the crosswalk, but still is cheaper than the eleven sidewalk segments, which we knew were gonna be expensive. So the eleven sidewalk segments um costed out just to a little over um, a little under three point one million dollars. So in total, all of these thirty-two projects, just based on a preliminary costing, cost five point seven million dollars. Um, and what I did for kicks was kind of say, okay, if we take this, we take this construct of we're getting roughly four hundred thousand dollars every four years from Complete Streets. It works out to a hundred thousand dollars per annum. And perhaps the town is able to save another hundred thousand dollars on its own through either mitigation or free cash flow. What would we be able to accomplish? And so if you take that two hundred thousand dollar funding um per year, part from grant and part from town, how many years would it take to complete this? And the answer is twenty-nine, you know, so it.
Is that an interest-bearing accounts or is that just?
That's, well, this is in present dollars. So like, this is a little bit fictional because obviously all of this inflates. And and Brian and Jason gave me that feedback that I need to inflate some of these numbers as I go forward, um, for sure. But again, I was just really trying to crudely say, could I get anywhere into somebody's lifetime? Accomplishing these complete streets projects. And the answer is yes. You know, if you were, if you were a young, um, you know, twenty or thirty-something that moved to town, you might see all of this completed before you move out of town. My case, maybe not.
But the savings too is, would those be held in interest-bearing, the two hundred thousand dollars per year? Or did you just extrapolate that over? How much it costs to get like twenty-nine?
I literally was doing, I was literally doing um kind of stupid math in terms of like, here's the, here's the total cost in present day dollars. And here's the total savings in in present.
Seems like as a town, we're pretty good at compounding interest. So that might.
Exactly. We certainly know how not to spend money.
Um, and then just a question for safety. Is that uh electrified signal signaling safety?
Yeah, so I'll show you. I mean, it um kind of.
I wonder if there's an alternative there to lessen the blow, like could you do stop signs or just something cheaper?
Yeah, so let's just read an example on this. So um, this was just this, so I then I cut the three categories into three separate spreadsheets. So this is just all the safety and shared roadway projects. Um, and the and the ones that are in black in esti- in in this estimated cost are actually town dollars. If it's in blue, then that's a Katie Dugan special in terms of like how she calculated it. But let's just take this one um at the top as an example. This is Beach Street from the um Town Common down to Atlantic. Um. And so the description reads, you know, create a safe and shared um environment along Beach Street. Um, improve signage um at key points. Um. Posted speed limits, pedestrian scale lighting at key points to increase driver awareness of other road users. Quarter speed li- um electronics quarter speed limit signs. Um. So that's just, again, a lot of signage as the example there. It's unclear to me whether there's gonna be anything in terms of actual um painting on the roadway that would indicate spaces for um you know bicyclists and pedestrians versus vehicular traffic. I mean, you, we all know Beach Street and that's a, that's a tough tough one, just given the ledge and um kind of some of the water. But that's, that's one example. Um.
It's interesting, cuz as I, they walk through, walk down Beach Street in my head, I think about that, that blind spot that you come around the corners, like the only dangerous spot. So um. I feel like this is like the big picture, full spectrum of what you could do. I wonder if there's a way to kind of, I don't know, do you go, do you wait to have the funds for everything? Or do you just kind of try to try to break it off and apply the the things that would create the the best safety right now instead of waiting? Um.
I think I I my personal view is that um part of the beauty of of having kind of a stabilization fund is that you can, you can see where your savings get to. And let's say we get to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings and we have a priority that costs a hundred and fifty thousand and it's a top priority, then you go and do it. And you drop your savings balance down to fifty thousand and you save up again. And and again, I think part of it is, you know, twofold. One, you know, how how rapidly are these funds gonna accumulate? And if you're, if we're in the mode of saving a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
You you can start chunking off of the some of these smaller ones relatively quickly. I mean, it it gets harder when you start talking about projects that are, you know, three hundred thousand, four hundred and five hundred thousand, cuz there you're having to save intensively over, you know, a couple of year period. Um, and that's part of the the prioritization conversation that I think we as a committee need to have before we move this forward as to
And these projects are prioritized on the left?
No, they're not. No, no, no. Um, these are just random order. Um. So there's no, there's no prioritization within it. It it um. That's really, that is really the work of um this group and perhaps community input is to take all of this and say, okay, we now know what these roughly cost by category. Now let's dive in and say of these, you know, what are the key s- safety and shared roadway projects that we'd like to see done first? What are the sidewalk segments that we'd like to see done first? Or what are the ADA and crossing ones? The only thing I will say about the ADA and crossing is it's just so it's, you know, relative to all the other projects, they they range from anywhere from a hundred, fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty, if that, you know. So there's a lot of little stuff in here. Um. But it's all, it's all crosswalks.
Katie, can I, can I ask you a question? Uh, two of them, actually. Uh, one is a lot of these roads seem to be on only one side of town. Not just that, but they seem to be very, very clustered right around the downtown. And yet that's not where the majority of people in town live. And I guess the second comment is how much of this is is you know, focused on the the coastline and and what's happening with Beechwood as an example? Uh, because it it just seems to me like, I I under- if we, if what we're doing is we're we're populating these areas for um a long-term strategy of rebuilding the downtown and making it a really accessible and 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 a really beautiful place. I I think that's a a laudable re- reason to be doing things. But I do feel as if from the standpoint of, you know, driving around town and and experiencing where there's traffic and whether there's people, you know, people colliding with with cars. They, I feel like um some of these things are they're very, they'll be very nice, but you know, I see lots more people in dangerous situations than some of these places. So I just, um, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we've made these determinations um of all the things we could do.
Well, so this was a hundred percent community input, Amy. This is what the community said.
Is that, is this really that?
This is really what the community said. This wasn't anybody making this up. This was literally translation from. I can show it to you, but there's.
You don't need to, but it was, isn't it interesting that nobody in Beechwood said anything?
Well, Beechwood has a.
A little bit, but I mean, really, what does that say about? It's just, it's.
Maybe it has to do with the mindset of safety. I mean, I think of Cedar Street in North Bay, Na- North Maine being extremely dangerous. I think of Forest Ave, Forest Ave being extremely dangerous. I think from West Corner to Rocky Beach being extremely da- dangerous. I don't, I don't, when I walk Beechwood to Wampatuck, I don't, it doesn't feel dangerous. So I wonder if if that maybe is.
Maybe that is. I mean, I, you know, I live, I live off of Jerusalem Road. And I I think of that as the most terrifying place for families with kids and 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 strollers that that you and and kids on bikes and things. There's no question about that. Um, uh, so I I take it, Katie, I I'm I'm not, I'm not thinking broadly enough in terms of where the information would have come from.
Yeah, no, it's not.
That's a good point.
It it's.
I didn't think you made it up. I just don't want you to.
I know, I know you didn't think I made it up. I, you know, I'm 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 fiendish, but I would never sit here and write project descriptions until three AM.
In the basement of Town Hall getting back at us, right?
Exactly. I am pretty sure there's not any town employees who are fiendish enough to sit there and write.
Yeah.
This was literally, so. I'm sorry, Tim.
One of the, one of the things that we've been trying to do with the the harbor is to uh create a better accessibility for the rest of the town from Beechwood to North Cohasset to wherever. Accessibility to the harbor. And I think what this is doing is creating accessibility to these places that are right now. People are terrified walking along, pushing strollers all they do it along Jerusalem Road and Atlantic Avenue. They they certainly do it, but God bless them. They you know, uh, I think I'd be hard pressed to do it myself. So I think that's really it. I mean, we have some uh beautiful places in Cohasset that are really um I wouldn't say inaccessible, but less accessible. And we can do a better job of making them available to all the community.
Yeah. And I think maybe that's a piece of it, Amy, is what you're seeing is that A, people are thinking that questions were centered around you know, where are places you wanna get to that you you can't easily get to now because you're missing pieces of connectivity? Or where are there places you wanna get to and um you're having transportation, you're having safety and other concerns. So it was I I don't, I don't remember honestly the exact questions that were posed in the in the Complete Streets public forum. But there was literally interactive map that people clicked on and and it was is I recollected, um, cuz we were in kind of public forum mode, like we got a high level of um participation on that. So it's it's real live data from Cohasset citizens. This isn't like, uh, this isn't theoretical in terms of like what somebody else thinks we want or need.
Katie, is the, is the Forest Ave Cedar Street intersection on there?
Uh, Forest Ave.
I'm sorry, North Maine and Cedar? You know, where um if you're going up the dump from North Main, you know, how there's.
I I don't know. I don't remember seeing that one, honestly. Um, and again, part of, part of the question, so part of the feed, part of the question is um, like, did we miss anything? In this process, I I don't.
Yeah, so to Amy's point, like, or Tom, maybe we need to have a walking meeting and walk around Beechwood together and see if there's anything missing in Beechwood. I feel like also that North Main Cedar spot, we're, there shows the big mirror so you can look behind you towards the train station. Down Cedar Street, it's just, it's the worst spot.
Yeah.
Mirror's not there anymore, though.
Yeah, the mirror got broken, I think.
Yeah, the mirror's been gone for years.
Exactly, very valid point.
So the other thing that, um, just so we don't forget it, is um this whole conversation around sidewalks. So there there are eleven sidewalks. And in terms of costing, um, this is where um there were a couple of segments that were costed out. And um, we knew to begin with that um the cost per linear foot was going to be high. So the cost per linear foot um could range anywhere from two hundred dollars to upwards of six hundred dollars, depending on on granite curbing and a whole bunch of other um aspects related to the design. And so um it on the sidewalks, there were more of these sidewalks that the town had costed out. Uh, I then went in and costed out the remaining projects, which is like about half of them. I landed out using a cost per linear foot um just to estimate of three hundred dollars, um, which is kind of that midpoint. Um, ultimately, we'll need to kind of fine tune some of this. But um, what this landed out showing is that, um, at least based on what I can see in this spreadsheet, there's about eleven thousand linear feet of sidewalks that were identified as priorities. And um that totaled about three million dollars. Of the sidewalk segments that are listed on here. Uh, I think there's one, two, three, three that are reconstructions and the rest are new. Um, there's this one that I say newish, um, because there might be something there. Um, but what we're talking about is such a significant improvement that at the end of the day, you're basically c- clean scraping. What's there and starting over in terms of grading and everything else? Um, so Tim, there's some definitely some projects on here that tie directly to um tie directly to the harbor. Um, there's this um there's the common which is already done, which is the first one that was done with Complete Streets funding um two years ago. Uh, but that's the only segment out of the eleven that's complete. There's a short segment um that is a piece of connectivity that was never done because of um wetlands and concom concerns. That's a piece of sidewalk from um uh, from Pond Street all the way around to the athletic facilities. So you literally have to go from sidewalk into the roadway um to get to the athletics facility. So that's a relatively small piece of connectivity. There's um sidewalk construction along Margin Street towards um Stock Bridge and Summer towards the Yacht Club. There's um reconstruction of sidewalks uh along Pleasant Street. To Old Pasture, um, there's a second segment of Cushing um on the lower end, um, on and on it goes. There's a sidewalk segment um that's tied into the three A North project along King Street. Um, so these are the ones that were identified. Um, I did work with Jason to try and map some of this, and this is what I circulated just to the to the group really shortly ago. Um, I haven't had a chance to go through it, um, but I'd love to get some feedback on this. Because ultimately, we we need to be able to have a conversation with the community about these segments. Um, to double check that it reflects everything that everybody wants done, but also give people a visual. So one of my comments, so so here are the three categories, ADA and crossing, safety and shared roadways and new sidewalk segments. Jason chose chose green for safety and shared roadway, which I think we need to change to something like yellow because it doesn't jump off the map. But he's plotted all of these crosswalk or ADA um compliance issues that largely center around uh either forest or um the downtown village harbor area. The pink is the sidewalk segments um that were identified in the in the, in the work. And as you said, Amy, there's only one sidewalk segment over here that um, you know, it doesn't even, there's nothing that crosses over three A, I guess is the point that you were trying to make earlier. And that that is absolutely true. This this sidewalk segment right here is the one that has a little bit of Toll Brothers funding against it. It's that segment in terms of the impact that Toll Brothers had on Taller Rico. Um, the mitigation fund has seventy-five thousand dollars in it. The segment itself costs something like three hundred thousand. So we've never been able to bridge that gap between what we got in the mitigation funds and what we need to actually enact the segment um for the that that community. Um, so that's the sidewalks. And then, as I said, safety and roadway is in green. So um I guess my question to the group is now that you kind of understand what, at least I've preliminarily pulled together, what do we want to see next in terms of helping us have a conversation about how we develop all of this information into a prioritization plan? Or how do we think about what the framework is for prioritizing this?
Um, I have a thought or just a general throw out there. I'm, I assume at this point, the police or other community workers haven't given any input into the prioritization. So for example, could be overlay citations or accidents, whether with people or cars that might help us, you know, if safety, if we decide as a committee that safety is our top priority or, you know, children biking to school or walking to school, um, is that something data that we could pull and be able to use potentially?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, yeah, it's a great point. I don't, I don't know how fire or police was pulled as part of the Complete Streets. It may be in there. Or it just may not. It may just be completely community input and not input from um police. So I I definitely think there's, that's a great question first around from Complete Streets. What, if anything, is in there? And if it isn't, then how do we tease that out? I know that, I know that we could have a conversation with Chief Quigley um and Chief Sylvia and they have been working with a select board around general safety. So I I know they have an opinion on this. I just don't know how integrated that opinion is. Okay, so that's great.
I could just add uh one thing that the the sidewalk discussion around the harbor really is interrelated with a couple of things. One is the captain's walk. Uh, and that is uh ongoing and that is a project that is uh uh that is underway. Second is uh tied into the resiliency of the harbor infrastructure. Clearly, if uh if you take that to the point where you have to uh raise the roadways and the seawalls, uh the, any sidewalk would be part of that. So uh it's a, it's an interrelated discussion, uh but it certainly is underway and that uh that will be ongoing.
Yeah. I, I mean, I had the question like before this gets set in stone and we sort of try and memorialize this so that we have a plan that we're working towards. I do, I do think it's worth asking the question, like what is missing? What did we forget? Not to reopen public input, but I think it's one of those like last calls, like forever hold your peace kind of thing. Because the, not all community members are listening at the same time. So I think there's a way of like reaching back out to the community for those that have moved recently or just weren't paying attention because they had three kids in diapers three years ago, like that last call for, you know, what did we miss, you know? Uh, so that's one piece of it that I was kind of interested in. Other thoughts? Jen, I know you had, I mean, you were interested in sort of thinking about how, how we further filter this. And I did a quick filter based on project description, ADA versus safety versus sidewalk, but are there other filters of the existing information that would be helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I think the bucketing that you just did to me was really helpful in that it just sounds more strategic. So when you look at the list and it looks like a just a very long wish list, and I think when you bucket it that way, I think that alone is kind of inviting the question. I I really like the idea you just had of sort of not reopening to totally reset the priorities, but to just give the sort of last chance for input. And I, that's something that I've thought across a lot of the initiatives that we think about, that the methodology that we have for sort of collecting this data really, really early on, it's just not perfect. And so I like that idea, but I think framing it in the strat- the the sort of buckets that you went through were essentially str- strategic priorities. And then, so so when I think about, is there any other lens we should be looking at it through? I, I think you can take those three strategies and say, you can do it in two directions. You can take those three strategies and say, is there something we're missing within this strategy? So safety being one of them, and then, you know, we do see here about these intersections a- aside from three A, which I think has the state aspect, but you do hear about intersections that have safety issues. So you kind of, is there anything we're missing within those three strategies? And then is there an objective that we're missing? Um, and I guess overall, where we have such a limited budget and this is such a high expense item. You know, we are missing a lot of town, but so much of town is constrained by just no space on the road and the same, the same strategy would apply to every road in town, if that makes any sense, so.
I mean, if we could do the whole thing, I think we would, we'd do a do-over. Because we can't afford it and in many cases it's not like practical.
Yeah, so I guess nothing jumps off the page to me as another strategy that we could even reasonably consider implementing. No, um, but but I I don't know if others have a different view.
I'm just curious about the purpose of sidewalks along three A. Um, and when you're talking about going down from Avalon and then what, 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 what does one call it? Stop and Shop Plaza? That's goes below, the 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 idea is to try to connect Avalon and then the possible development over there. Is it, speaking of which, is there anything new on that?
Not that we know of. I mean, there, there, there is potential for another set of units, but I I think the the owners have not shown any interest in that. We, uh, the town had approached them a while back when we were trying to come up with solutions for our forty B um to see if they would be willing to expand Avalon. And as a result, us pick up more affordable housing units and the answer was not interested. So I think Avalon i- is Avalon for now. At least we know in terms of the two hundred and twenty units. I think the, 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 the answer that I can give you best around why sidewalks on Route three A. In my mind, there's a reason to have them on three A North because it is the most logical connection to um Wampatuck and Whitney Spurs that we have. Unfortunately, going down North Main Street is just riddled with um cost, engineering and um conservation issues. And to be very blunt, it's on our dime versus going the three A route for that piece of connectivity where it would be on the state's tip. While you might have to wait for the money, it's not your money, it's state money. So um, I don't. The other thing I would say as it relates to three A redesign, that when it happens, the state mandate or the state standard now for state roadways is that they ha- they contemplate shared roadways. So state design is always going to take into account biking and walking and sidewalks, whether you want it to or not, that's just the state standard that's applied. And so we're not going to control that one way or another, but we could use it to our benefit, I guess is what I'm saying, if we want that connectivity um to the MBTA street, train station and the Wampatuck and the Whit- Whitney um spur or the Whitney Rail Trail, which I think we do.
Yeah.
Well, and presumably, like from Avalon, we want to go across to be able for them to go to, people that live there to go walk to stores or. Plaza and get that going at the end of at North Main and, I'm sorry, Sawyer and and uh three A.
Yeah.
Because you're, you just see your folk, which is good, you're focusing on walking and biking, but I'm just thinking are these sidewalks going to be utilitarian in terms of of more than just what we like to think? Yeah, people are going to be biking and walking. Are they going places on these sidewalks?
Yeah, and I think I I I've, you, you definitely, I definitely think there would be um demand, like true demand for it from Avalon to walk down into the village or to be able to connect over to um frankly, uh open space at Thayer Woods or open space at Wampaduck. So yeah, there would be demand there. I personally have demand for a safe way to bike to um from my house off of Forest to the rail trail. Like I, I, I really hate going down this segment of North Main Street. I do a Hail Mary every time I turn there to try and get to the train station to cut through the parking lot. And if I had a safe way to do it on Lower King along Route three A to a safe um stoplighted crossing um for the rail trail, I'd do it, but I don't today. So I, so I do think there is demand that is there for some for that segment, some of these segments on three A being developed, both in terms of populations at Avalon, but also people wanting that connectivity to pieces of open space. Or in some cases, the train station, they'll park their bike and take the train in.
Thank you.
I I would just also add that the affordable housing component, so um we, I think you've got Avalon, now we've got this new development. I personally feel like if you look ahead ten or twelve years, I would be very surprised if Aval- Avalon hadn't expanded. And I completely agree with Katie, like that's not today. But um I think Lauren said that she had had an inquiry from the new owners. It could be not for a long time, but there's just such limited space here and they have a very valuable asset. And the, a number of people coming in and out of that, that po- that um development already is really high. I live on Sawyer, I've seen so much more foot traffic on Sawyer in the last few years than I had in years prior, so. I think it's like a noticeable shift, and so I think it'll increase. And and we want to be able to have that, like with the new rule relating to public transportation, we don't actually have developable, developable a lot of developable land around that MBTA. Um, but this sort of, the other thing we want is, we want accessibility to public transportation and we want accessibility to the town. And I think at least we're getting one, so I think it's helpful for the affordable housing side.
Yeah. Um, I want to go back to this kind of, um, thank you, I don't disagree with you, Jen, that there, there is going to be more. There's going to be more Avalon, I just, I can't put a timeframe on it. I- in terms of like the the buckets themselves, I I do think that there's a question, you know, if we go back to the community and ask them what's missing, there is a question to be asked around, you know, what in terms of the buckets, would you rather do a couple really expensive sideways sidewalk segments? Or would you rather do all of the safety and shared roadways, like? So a little bit of trading off or getting them to articulate um qualitatively, what is more important in terms of the project types, I think would be helpful. Um, because right now it's just a list of thirty-two entries and there's no way outside of the project types to kind of rank order our sidewalks theoretically more important or ADA crosswalks or are just signage and general safety as you were talking about, Marissa, important. So we can prioritize them by project type for sure and have people articulate in the project types. The other thought that I had was just like this concept of like, do you try and couple a bunch of smaller projects and get like? the example I gave was, you know, do you get all ten ADA crosswalk projects done for five hundred thousand dollars? Or you tackle one sidewalk segment? So is it, for the community, is there any thinking or rationale behind, you know, doing a bunch of really small dollar ones first? Um, or do we just, or do we save up and we do some of the large ones? Again, like, not sure there's much strategy in that, but I mean, there certainly needs to be a conversation around, you know, what do people want to see happen with their dollars? Do they want us to, you know, save up until we have, you know, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and we can do like one big thing? Or do we want to spend it on a bunch of smaller little things that might have, um, immediate impact sooner?
And, and the other cost question that you me- you mentioned, you know, that there's a big differential between granite curbs and like an asphalt lump. And so that's a, that's a prioritization question for the town too, because there's a
Yeah.
Human take there.
And I think, I, from, I think what I've kind of, and I would go back and test this with Jason, Federico and Brian, um, Joyce, is that when it comes to asphalt lumps, um, they, not only do they sort of disintegrate more quickly, because there's no kind of structure around them, from a shared roadway or safety perspective, there's a couple of those sidewalk segments where they're essentially new, because we have, we have an existing sidewalk, but it's like grassy strip or dirt strip separating roadway. And if somebody's not paying attention, like you literally have the car going from the roadway into the sidewalk with nothing from a safety perspective, so part of the sidewalk redesign or part of the sidewalks, the thinking behind the town is if we're going to do it, we're going to do it in a way that creates true and sa- it doesn't just create an asphalt lump, it creates true safety in terms of segregating um, vehicular traffic from bikers and walkers. And we have a lot of that in town where somebody, you know, distracted could easily drift onto a sidewalk without hitting a granite curve or any kind of speed bump. So I think it's a question for sure, but I think from a town standard perspective, one, what I observed, it was more on the expensive side because it actually provided real safety versus, um, just a place to ride your bike.
So I, I agree with that, and perhaps I'm realizing now that my, uh, my bias might have been embedded in my question.
What, asphalt lump?
About that, um, but I guess if that's the case, then if there is a, a recommendation from the town, then maybe we, if we're, if we're going to the trouble of having, of having community outreach, it might be a good, I, I like some of the trend that we've had where we're explaining to the town why decisions are being made on cost. And if that's a lean that we're gonna kind of move toward anyway, maybe this is a good messaging opportunity.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, okay. Well, I, I know it's getting late and we've, we've actually covered a lot of territory tonight, um, and I, I truly want to think about this a little bit more myself, um, but I would love everyone on the working group to spend a little bit of time in the spreadsheet themselves. And, you know, whatever observations the working group has about those thirty-two entries, like if there's something that jumps off the page as you read through them, it'd be really helpful to get that now, so that as we begin to put a little bit more of a framework around this for conversations with the planning board and community members, we kind of tease that out. So I guess I encourage everybody to, to, if you haven't had a chance to kind of deep dive on some of the information, spend a little bit of time, and now you have a map which will hopefully help you correlate. I mean, they're not numbered, which is actually one thing I could ask Brian to do, um.
Amy, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have we ever thought about, uh, the difficulty of actually installing the sidewalks? Not because of the physio, the, the topography, but because of the neighborhood resentment. So there's always been this story said to me that nobody on Jerusalem Road would ever allow a sidewalk to be there because then people would want to walk on it. And I, you know, I, I think that's a little bit overstated, but it is an interesting comment because, you know, right now they have this place that's ninety-nine percent to themselves. And, um, maybe they don't want people walking on it, maybe they don't want people peering in their backyards. And so maybe adding in a diff- another qualification as to selection, and that is, what's the ease of being able to get the rights away to be able to install the sidewalks?
Okay. I mean, the, the luckily, I mean, for better or worse, there are no sidewalk segments being proposed, at least currently along, along the whole, I mean, except for some down in the harbor area specifically. Um, Jerusalem, all of this green is, is basically shared roadway improvements, which are not sidewalks, um, themselves, but I, I, I hear you in terms of ease of, it, it's both neighborhood ease, but it's also ease of the, getting the easements. Okay. Any other comments?
No, just wondering if that reflects on, on why the train station was put up on three A instead of being in the village.
I don't know. Uh, yeah, um, I was in diapers when the train came back. No, my children weren't, I was not personally in diapers, I was in diaper world, so I wasn't paying much attention to like how those decisions were being made. I was just trying to catch a nap, so, but.
No, but you think of that with this town, that, there, you know, good point, no sidewalks there. And now we have, you know, no train station in the village, and we're, we're all talking about connectivity and the urge to make sidewalks now, so that people can get from the train station to the village.
Yeah, now, uh, yes, what is old is new and new is old.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And by the way, um, in case you're interested with the store commission, because you hadn't asked, and I missed part of the meeting, because I flapped off and couldn't get back on, we are working on the ca- the signage for the captain's wall.
Oh, awesome, that is great.
But can, the, we, we've got a, a budget, uh, about ten grand, uh, for ten signs, um, cantilevered uh, with photographs and, and text. And that's what we're going to be devoting our next couple of meetings on.
That's great news, Julia.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Um, so the last thing I wanted to talk to the committee about was, um, the Sawyer Street segments specifically, and, and this was um, a request to, um, the committee to see if we could agree to send a letter of support for the Sawyer Street sidewalk extension. So the background on this is that, that the town has, um, attempted to go through the permitting process at least once, to my knowledge, as it relates to the Sawyer Street, um, sidewalk extension from Fair Oaks to three A. And it wasn't successful, and I, I honestly don't know when this was or what the history was behind it. It just, all I know is that it was attempted and it failed. Um, subsequent to that, we have Avalon, which was developed, and the gift account that was, um, created as a result of that agreement and the fact that we have, you know, over five hundred thousand dollars sitting, um, on our balance sheet for sidewalks, but also potential improvements at the intersection of Sawyer and three A. Fleshward to today, there is a proposal in front of Concom, um, for the sidewalk improvements. It runs, or the, the sidewalk extension, it runs from Fair Oaks, um, up to three A on the Fair Oaks side. And then there's crosswalk improvements to get it across the street to the Stop and Shop Plaza and to the, the new and improved ADA compliant crosswalk that has no safe crossing in terms of a signal over to Whitney there, but there is an improved, um, crosswalk that is ADA compliant. Um, the Concom has, the town has gone through the permitting process. They had, they engaged, um, tech engineering to do the stormwater and the wetlands work that was required, um, they went, um, close to a month ago um, and got some significant feedback from the Conservation Commission around, um, the stormwater management solution that was proposed and, and were requested to do a series of follow-ups. The town did those follow-ups and had a subsequent, um, continued public hearing, um, a week ago. Um, and they have a final, um, hearing, um, in front of Concom to review, um, two plans. One is modifications to the existing plan that they presented a month ago to address some of the concerns relative to stormwater. And the second is a completely new plan that would, um, put in, um, permeable sidewalks instead of impermeable asphalt, um, and to get the maintenance equipment that was needed to maintain those permeable sidewalks that the town doesn't currently own. Through this process, um, at certain points in the conversation, members of Concom, not all of them, um, but a few have expressed concerns about the importance of this sidewalk segment, um, to the community, making statements like, um, you know, I don't see people, um, walking today on Sawyer. Um, I don't believe that people are going to utilize this sidewalk segment. Um, there were other comments made about, um, whether the sidewalks truly needed to be ADA compliant. You know, when it comes to stormwater, the less impermeable, the better. So there was a discussion about why can't we make these sidewalks four feet wide versus five feet wide, which is compliant. It would improve our stormwater, um, and our discharge, the wetlands. Um, the town pushed back, saying that if we're going to do town projects going forward, they need to be ADA compliant. My reason, my rationale for, um, where we are today is that unfortunately, the project has failed in the past, and I don't, I, I want to let Concom go through their process. They are, they are the ones that are in charge of, um, stormwater bylaws, and they're in charge of variances as it relates to wetlands. And so I think they have to go through the process, process and the, the subject matter experts on that. That being said, I want to disabuse them of concerns that they have, that this is not a priority for the town or that ADA compliance isn't a priority for the town. And so the thought process behind the memo was just pulling out of the master plan and the open space and rec plan, um, all the examples that I could come up with to sort of support that the sidewalk segment or sidewalks in general are important to the community. Um, and, um, that ADA compliance is also important to the community. So that was the thought process, was to try and, um, contextualize the Sawyer sidewalk extension, not force Concom or suggest a Concom that they take, um, our advice as it relates to stormwater or bylaws, but rather provide the support that this is important to the community. So I'll stop there and, and, um, let others ask questions. The way this would work is we would, we would agree that the, the memo, however people want to edit it, makes sense. We would vote that we would want to send this memo of support. And the memo of support would get be sent to all the, the, um, members on Concom, plus the Conservation Agent, plus Chris Senior and, um, Carrie Thompson, and a lot more, just to kind of memorialize support for the project, um, nothing more than that. Um, so I'll pause there and let people ask questions, concerns, um, and we can talk about whether people want to vote on this or not.
Well, I'll just say that I think this, um, this strikes me as being, first of all, I don't know about anyone else's house, but my house is extremely loud right now with screaming from the Red Sox game with the other. Um, I was just gonna say, I think this, uh, to me, um, falls into, when we talked, talked in the past about a couple of, um, ways that this committee can be effective. One is drawing, um, connected lines with other committees and, and, uh, decision-making authorities in town. So this seems to do that. The other is also, I think there's like a communication component of the, about, that we've talked about before, where when we know that something is a priority of the town, kind of, uh, taking opportunities to put that message out so that the town understands what targets we're aiming at, um, was another sort of strategy that I think we've talked about before, so this seems to hit both. I think as long as we as a committee are supportive, and I guess that's my only question is, I, I know that I personally am supportive of, of adding, um, adding the sidewalk in the, in the stretch of Sawyer. I think, I, I don't know that we've kind of come to any, I, I, have we reached a consensus on that other group? And if we have, it seems logical to me to provide the supportive load better.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, there's two, there's two questions, are people supportive of the side, Sawyer Street sidewalk extension? And second, are you supportive of articulating the, the master plan priorities as it relates to it? I think the master plan priorities are pretty clear, and we're not, we're not fudging that. I mean, there's documented evidence all over, including it being listed as a top five, um, et cetera, et cetera. It, but then underlying that, obviously, the individual committee members' opinions on it. So you're, you're in su- supportive, question number one, which is communicating about priorities that are in the master plan and our other plans. And the second question, you're also supportive, it sounds like, Jen, of the, the Sawyer Street Extension Sidewalk specifically.
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Um, other questions, concerns?
I think we have had a, an opportunity to do this for a long time, at least partially subsidized by funds from the outside. And it's something that we need to partu- to continue with. I think that getting, I think there's a solution, I just think that between town and Concom, they have to come to the, to the, to an agreement. You know, they, if, it, and, I mean, I suppose nobody's asked the question of whether or not Wayne Sawchuk would provide um, some additional land from his property, which is what it walks along as a way of having a larger footprint to be able to work with.
This, I, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what land.
I think the statement is saying that, you know, the, wh- wh- why this is having, uh, is, is not unfolding as rapidly as one might expect, is just simply because it's complicated. And, and that one, and, and each time that an issue is raised about it, it's not that it's, you know, been put in the tank. It's really more about can we find a better solution? So I think that there is a solution and it'll be found, it's just taking longer than we might have wanted.
And, and that's fine, as long as people don't give up on finding that solution and or feel like there isn't community need, I guess. Like, part of, part of my, I, I just didn't want the, the comments that nobody's going to use this, or the community doesn't want that to like justify letting the project die on the vine or just linger. Um, so that was part of my personal justification for submitting a letter of support was just, again, to echo that this is important to the community, so let's find that solution once and for all. And, and, and you're, you're pointing out, Amy, that it's, it's not, if it was simple, it would have got done years ago, like.
I think, what I think is interesting is that we didn't do it at all, and, you know, it's, it, so it's past due. And, um, I don't think it's bad to communicate that, um, that it, it's been in the master plan, it's still in the master plan, and it's one of the, the, the situations in which, well, we could accumulate another five hundred thousand dollars and all be retired. But, um, it's, you know, it, it would probably make sense to spend the money.
There you go. Um, Cassie, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm extremely supportive, I think that it would create a huge benefit. I think it's, it's in demand and exactly kind of implements the goals of master planning, um, of the master plan, as well as connective, and, you know, as, as it goes for connectivity. I do kind of question, you know, we're writing this letter of support, I'm not saying that we're petitioning Concom, but like, how does it look as like a public board if we're going to Concom and asking, not for a waiver, but, you know, we're kind of trying to work with them. Um, I don't know exactly how the permitting and planning is going, but I just, I think about that and how that could have an impact, um, or affect us after. Um, just being the glass half-empty, but you know that I want this to happen, so.
You know, I, um, again, I, I view this as more of a communication tool than I do a advocacy tool, uh, just communicating the, the community's priorities around this. Um, so, I, I don't, again, I, I, I want no appearance that we're suggesting to Concom that, that, um, is not in their jurisdiction to grant or not grant a variance or sort through the stormwater details, that's not the intent. Um, the intent is to say that the community would like a solution here, so the solution is in your jurisdiction, please. the solution is in your jurisdiction, please.
Okay, yep, no, I see what you're saying, I just wanted to kind of think through that.
Yeah, no, I again, um I I don't, I didn't um I didn't call up our charge, but part of our charge is to communicate priorities. And so I kind of, I guess I, in my mind, like that was like part of the charge is like setting the helping set the priorities and helping communicate the priorities. And so like this is just communicating, like it's a priority.
Yep, yeah.
Um Marissa, um not to put you on the spot, but you're pretty up to speed on this because I spoke to you and Peter on this, so from Open Space.
Yeah, and yeah, no, I think um, you know, just based off of what we chatted about on Friday, I think from Open Spaces, we're still planning on trying to meet on Wednesday, just to kind of do a quick poll to make sure everyone's comfortable. Um and you know, as Peter mentioned, I think we're all just want to make sure that the trees are replanted that end up having to be taken down. I think that's a big concern for Open Spaces. Um from my personal standpoint, I think this is a huge priority for for the town and for for me personally, I would definitely be in favor. I think, as I also mentioned on Friday, my biggest concern is that what happens at the end of Sawyer and making sure that that eventually the crosswalk safety for accessibility to Whitney Fair and ultimately the T, the MBTA and the um Wampa Talk is in the future plans, but that also gets communicated to the community as well, because I think that's really important for people to understand the full connectivity of it.
Yeah, and that's why I chose, although it feels a little bit duplicative, was to show that like the the honestly, when you combine all them together, it's this top combination of SegWish, which includes those three A north improvements plus Sawyer Street. It all ties together in a bigger plan.
Yeah.
Um. Tim Davis, are you there or are you hiding, drinking a glass of red wine? I think he's drinking a glass of red wine, maybe he went to dinner, who knows? All right, I think I've pulled, have I missed anybody else from the committee? It's on still. I don't see Julia anymore. Um so with that, I mean, I I think we've um, we have, we have five opinions from the committee. Um Lauren, I guess I'll just ask you as town planner, do you have any concerns about us submitting a memo like this to CONCOM? Or do you think that we're we're um we're headed in the right direction?
No, I don't have any concerns, I think this is the kind of support that's appropriate and at times needed for this kind of initiative. So I think you have all the documentation and the rationale that would be appropriate for you to submit this type of support.
Okay, that's great. So um I'm gonna just quickly ask for um a vote from the Master Plan Implementation Committee to send a memo of support for the Sawyer Street Extension to the Conservation Commission um as drafted, um can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, all in fiver, I, Kitty Dugan.
Hi, Amy.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jen Boylan.
Hi, Amy Glassmeyer.
Okay, uh I thought I heard Cassie and I thought I heard Marissa, right? You guys crossed over.
Yes, I, Cass Melatesta.
Okay, I, Marissa, okay, great, well, thank you. So the plan is I'm gonna wait for Open Space and Rec um to have their conversation on Wednesday night um because I did put them as um one of the two people in the from column. I think it's actually a nice statement to have two committees that are interested in this topic jointly send a memo. So assuming that that conversation goes well, I will send this off to CONCOM on um Thursday morning um or late Wednesday night so that they have it in their record when they continue the um public hearing conversations on on Thursday. And as Laura, as Amy suggested, I mean, it it it's still, I mean, there's, there's a lot that needs to be worked out. Um and and there is, there is a path forward, it's just it's a little bit of where there's a will, there's a way and sorting through a lot of details in terms of um the engineering on stormwater um and certainly on the variances. So that's great, um I appreciate everybody's um input. Um trying to think, is there anything else on the agenda? I'm gonna table the three A um conversations, A, because I haven't really done anything on them and B, it's late. But um if people are amenable, I was thinking that we could meet again in early November. End of November, we bump into Thanksgiving and it always seems um November always seems short. So I was gonna actually sus- suggest that we meet in four instead of six weeks. And I was proposing um Monday, November eighth. Does that theoretically work well for people's calendars?
That works for me.
And um does anybody, we can set the start time to what works for people. Uh you know, I I can make six thirty work, sometimes seven is slightly better for me as a mom trying to get dinner on the table. I know we've got a bunch of moms on the on the committee themselves. So do people, do have people have a preference of six thirty versus seven in terms of a start time?
I would also vote for seven, but I think Tom might have had a conflict that drove us to six thirty, is my rec.
A- and Tom is now just a a a participant, not a member, so I was.
I don't count, I do not count anymore.
You count in so many ways, just not on this particular issue, unless you want to make dinner.
My objection to six thirty is for all boards that it's just too early for people who come home from work and eat dinner and want to participate, that's all, it's just a general objection.
Okay, all right, so do do people object to um seven o'clock on the eighth as our next meeting date? Okay, and that's what we will do. Um so thank you, everybody, Marissa, thank you for joining us. I um I I'm looking forward to working some more on the sidewalk um prioritization plan, but I think tonight was a good conversation around how to begin to think about organizing all that information.
Thank you, everyone, nice to meet you, Marissa.
Yeah, all right, guys, well, I'm gonna call us adjourned at um nine, ten um PM. And thank you, everyone. Um and I'll I'll let everybody know how the sidewalk conversation on Thursday goes. Um that may not get resolved, but at least we'll have submitted our letter of support from a community and a master plan perspective.
Thank you very much, as always.
Right, thanks, guys, all right, bye.
Bye.